Good evening and welcome to the July 12, 2021, not regular meeting, work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have three discussion topics. The first is Montgomery County presentation on the Building Energy Performance Standards legislation. Then we're going to have a discussion on the Montgomery County Planning Quarter Forward Transit Plan. And then we're going to get into our solitary court stream restoration project discussion. So let's go right to the first one. And tech team, if you could bring up Deb Moran, our sustainability coordinator, and then Emily Curly, Lindsay, Robinette Shaw, and Stan Edwards from the county. And Deb, I will hand it over to you whenever you're ready.
Thanks, I'm just gonna make sure my friends from DEP pop up here quickly. Good evening, we are here to talk about the Building Energy Performance Standard Legislation that is currently in Montgomery County. It is an amendment to the existing Montgomery County Benchmarking Law, and it includes the develop, the addition of more building types to be covered in the Benchmarking Law, and then establishes these Building Energy Performance Standards. So I'm going to hand it over to, I believe Lindsay is going to be leading us through the presentation today. So tech team, if you could bring up the packet, it's the first, I think it's four. Perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you Deb, I appreciate that. So I'm Lindsay Shaw, I'm with the Department of Environmental Protection for Montgomery County, and I'm joined by my colleagues Emily Curly, who's the Commercial Energy Program Manager, and Stan Edwards, who is the Chief of the Energy Climate and Compliance Division in DEP. And I would like to express my appreciation for being invited to speak with you all today on the current pending legislation in front of the Montgomery County Council, the Building Energy Performance Standard Legislation. If you can go to the next slide. So I think that most folks here likely know that the county has some pretty aggressive climate goals. Back in 2017, the County Council declared a climate emergency, which accelerated our greenhouse gas emission reduction goals to an 80% reduction by 2027, and a complete elimination of greenhouse gas emissions by 2035 from a 2005 baseline. From this chart here, you can see that we have a long way to go. We've made some progress since 2005, but to get to those 80% and 100% reduction targets, we have some significant work to do on the climate front. Next slide. So as you can see here, the energy use from the built environment makes up about half of the emissions in our community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventory. And this is looking at the 2018 emissions profile here. So Building Energy Performance Standard, which, which I'll refer to as BEPS in this presentation, addresses emissions from existing commercial and multifamily buildings by improving the energy performance of their operations. So it makes up a little bit of the residential wedge, a little bit of the commercial wedge, multifamily straddles the line here because sometimes they're individually residential metered, and sometimes they have a commercial master metered. So they kind of float across this line here. Next slide, please. So what is a Building Energy Performance Standard? In just a general definition is it's a policy that sets a minimum energy performance threshold for existing buildings. Back in 2019 and early 2020, DEP engaged a number of stakeholders of both the advocacy community, the regulated community of building owners and property managers, as well as energy service providers, utility representatives, and then county and city staff who were involved in this work group. In that work group, we collected policy recommendations, which is linked here and as part of your packet. And I know that I'm supposed to refer to it on a certain page number, and I've forgotten that page number offhand, but it's in your packet at the end of the presentation here. So those recommendations were key to informing the Building Energy Performance Legislation that is currently in front of the County Council. And so when we were looking at this legislation, our key guiding principle here was balancing flexibility with immediate action. So what that means is giving building owners flexibility in their pathways and compliance, but immediate action really required by our climate goals here in the county. When we approached making this legislation, we, what Deb had mentioned earlier, is we modified the existing Benchmarking Law, which the City of Gaithersburg opted into in 2017 with the first Benchmarking Data coming in in 2018. So that strategy allows the City of Gaithersburg to continue to opt into the Benchmarking Law without additional legwork. But of course, we all wanted to brief you to make sure that you knew about these amendments and what they meant for the county and for the City of Gaithersburg. This legislation, as it's written in front of the County Council, allows Montgomery County to achieve this first county status. We would be the first county in the whole nation to pass a law like this. There's only a handful of jurisdictions that have something like this on the books. But we will come back to the County Council with regulation to hammer out some of the more technical details of this policy. Next slide, please.
And the stakeholder report is on page 22 in your packet, if you want to look at it.
Thank you Emily, I appreciate that. It's hard to have multiple screens and multiple things going on, thank you. So the Building Energy Performance Standard builds off of the county's Energy Benchmarking Law. And so I just wanted to do a quick primer on what that is, since it's been a number of years since we've talked about it. This applies to certain county and privately owned, non-residential buildings that are 50,000 square feet and greater. We use Energy Store Portfolio Manager to collect that data. Building owners enter that data in, and they report it to DEP on June 1st of every year. The first year of reporting, and every third year, there's a process called data verification, which ensures that the data that building owners are putting into the system, the data that DEP receives through that, and then building owners are making quality decisions on good quality data. So that data verification process is built into our law. It's one of the best practices of benchmarking. So what that, this Benchmarking Law does is it results in building owners having a better understanding of their energy trends in their buildings and facilitating improvements. You can't manage what you don't measure. And by benchmarking building energy, you're able to measure what's going on in your building, and then making good, sound decisions based on that. And as mentioned before, having the Benchmarking Law, we've had this in place since 2014. It is a foundational component of having Building Energy Performance Standards in Montgomery County. Next slide, please. So part of the amendments that are in front of council right now with Bill 1621 is to expand the buildings that are covered by the Benchmarking Law. So currently, county-owned buildings and non-residential 50,000 square feet and greater are covered. The amendments here would expand that to additional county-owned buildings, of course, additional non-residential properties that were previously exempted and now covered, and adding in multifamily. And so adding in multifamily, this progression of Benchmarking Policies where they amend and eventually expand to a greater number of buildings, that is what we see in a lot of other jurisdictions. And there's been interest in the county to do this for a number of years. So we're excited that this is a possibility for us now that we have the Montgomery County Green Bank, we have commercial-based financing, we have options and assistance for building owners to better understand their energy use and then take action once they maybe aren't happy with the results. So it's, it's a good information, good information for building owners to have. Next slide, please. So this is a quick snapshot at what these amendments mean for the county level. Of course, we're going to talk about Gaithersburg next, don't worry. So at the county level, right now, approximately 40% of the commercial floor area in the county is covered. These amendments would more than double that to 85% of the commercial floor area. You can see the majority of that would come from adding in multifamily properties into the Benchmarking Law. Next slide, please. So in the City of Gaithersburg, you currently have about 9.4 million square feet of commercial floor area covered under the Benchmarking Law with over 62 properties. These amendments would increase that 19 million square feet to 140 properties. Currently, with your 2019 Benchmarking Data, we're still in the process of collecting and assessing calendar year 2020. In 2019, your compliance rate for the city was 84%. I gotta tell you, that's pretty good. And actually, thank you very much to Emily Curly for increasing that compliance rate. So Gaithersburg's been doing fairly well. There have been good success of ticking up over time. So these new buildings, you can see, of course, the majority of them are multifamily. Some office and some retail, the numbers on the top are the total buildings in the column, not new, not new to be added. So 28 multifamily, oh, maybe that's wrong, sorry. So the majority of the square footage here is from large multifamily buildings, got 28 of them here. So the thing to note, and we'll talk about this later in the presentation, is buildings that are new to the Benchmarking Law would have a number of years, three years to benchmark and get comfortable with the process of benchmarking before the concept of Building Energy Performance Standards even needs to come into their vocabulary. So they will have a number of years to get comfortable with the process of benchmarking with, with DEP support. So there's, you know, these are our new buildings to the Benchmarking Program if, if the law passes. So we'll definitely continue to work with Deb and, and her office to make sure that these building owners are comfortable with the process and have all these resources available to them. Next slide, please. So we're gonna transition to talking about BEPS, Building Energy Performance Standards. This is a quick snapshot at the other jurisdictions that have passed Building Energy Performance Standards. The state of Colorado recently, in the time that we sent in these slides and presenting here today, they have passed a statewide Building Energy Performance Standard Program in the state of Colorado. So they're not on this slide yet, but they will be soon. Neighbor to our south, Washington DC has passed Building Energy Performance Standards. New York City was one of the early adopters, Washington State and State Louis, Missouri. So again, on this list, we would be the first county. The main takeaway on this slide is that there is a variety and way of ways that jurisdictions are approaching Building Energy Performance Standards. You have a variety of compliance cycles, different thresholds of buildings that are covered under the law, whether or not there's an advisory board helping with implementation. And of course, one of the key differences in all of these is the metric that is being chosen for compliance. So we'll talk about Montgomery County's different approach to this, but we think a more innovative approach, and one that's a little bit friendlier to building owners, which we know is very important in these post-COVID times. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of what our policy model looks like. So there are, I would say the key takeaway here is that we have a long-term site energy use intensity performance standard. So each property type grouping will have a site energy use intensity, or EUI, it's the acronym for that. They would have a final standard 12 or more years out into the future. These interim standards would be every four years, they would check in with DEP to make sure they're on track to meet that final standard. In this trajectory model here, we have three different buildings in the same group type. So three offices, for example. The one all the way at the top, that office isn't performing so well at the baseline. But that building has, it has a far way down to go, but it likely has a lot of low-hanging fruit that will get it down to this compliance standard potentially more easily than building C at the bottom here, that maybe has done a number of energy efficiency upgrades already, but still needs to meet that final target. There, there's also a building D on here, which is one that isn't, doesn't need to meet the final standard. They are already below the line, and they just need to maintain. So this model here was developed with stakeholder input. We had building owners that said, you know, this, every three-year or every four or five year check-in cycle doesn't really work for me, I can't long-term plan with this. So again, this is balancing that flexibility with immediate action. We want building owners to start saving energy, we want them to take advantage of the programs that are available now, but there's a final standard far out into the future that they can plan for, that they can work around their tenant shifting or recapitalization cycles. There's a timeout in the future that they can begin to plan for. In that 12-plus-year cycle, buildings will likely have to do system upgrades anyway. We want them to make sure that they're making the most energy-efficient choice that's available to them. Also, considering this policy model here. Okay, good, I'm sorry, I bumped into the next slide, can we go to the next slide, please? So I wanted to make sure that we talk about how each baseline is, is covered. So each building's baseline is the average of historical energy use. So if a building has an off-year, we want to make sure that they're not penalized for that. So we're looking at historical energy use, the two highest years over the last three years. So they're set up maybe higher on that chart, but that they might come down a little bit lower. Data is reported every year through Portfolio Manager as building owners do now for their Benchmarking Law compliance. So there's not additional paperwork, as long as they're reporting and in compliance with the law. Every four years, properties would be evaluated as to whether or not they're meeting their targets. The target, the actual numerical target for each property type is going to be defined in regulation as it's currently written, June 1st, 2022. So we're less than a year out from knowing what those are, but we'll, we'll be developing that, we're developing those right now with some research, we'll talk about that in a minute. And something that was key to one of the, to the stakeholders and to the county executive was that onsite solar would receive a credit against the building performance. So our actual target is a net normalized site EUI, which means the building using energy, subtracting out the solar. We still are doing some research into what that's actually going to look like, but we want to make sure that this policy is a tool to incentivize onsite solar installations in Montgomery County. Next slide, please. We know that buildings do not operate smoothly down a straight line like this. So we want to ensure that there is a mechanism in the, in the law that can handle a bumpy ride to progress. So in this scenario here, this building A performance, they're, they're making progress, but they're not meeting their first interim target. So that would trip what would, we would call a B PIP, or a Building Performance Improvement Plan. So what that means is that the building would need to let us know how it plans to meet their final target in, say, 2035 or further out, with identifying which measures they're going to perform, when they're going to perform it, committing to a timeline, and letting us know that they're on the path to achieving that. The, the actual format of those B PIPs and what is actually, would be considered in compliance is still, again, pending this development of the regulations that will be a companion to this legislation. But if an owner continues forward and fills out a Building Performance Improvement Plan that is accepted by the county, they would be considered in compliance. They're making progress, they're just off their target a little bit, there might be something planned down the road, we don't want to alter their, you know, regular planning to say, you know, by the interim point, I plan on beating the target, I'm going to be even better than the target because I have this great thing planned already. So we want to make sure that we're recognizing that and making sure that that would be considered in compliance. Next slide, please. Another element of our policy is a building advisory board. This advisory board would provide recommendations on, on BEPS implementation. The county remains the decision-making authority, there is a couple models like this in different jurisdictions where the advisory board is just helping stand up the policy. There are some where the advisory board actually has decision-making authority on behalf of the jurisdiction. This is where we kind of came out in between those two. It would be set up like a boards committees and commissions and that, the county level, where you would have two, three-year terms for 15 different voting members in a staggered way, so not everyone's rolling off at the same time. But this is a way for the regulated community to have input and a stake in the implementation of this law. So it would involve county leadership, building owners from a variety of different building representations, utilities, energy and engineering services, finance groups, nonprofit and industry representatives. So these are all key voices to have at the table when we're talking about implementation of a policy. They would be tasked with advising on reviewing those B PIPs, the Building Performance Improvement Plans, handling unique and challenging situations, and changes in building ownership, changes in property use type, you know, advising on situations where, you know, there might be a change to the building that might alter their trajectory towards their final target. So once Bill 1621 is, fingers crossed, passed, we'll start putting this board together. So we're looking forward to that. Next slide, please. So here is a snapshot of the timeline moving forward. The key takeaway here, the overarching message is that this is something out into the future, it has flexible compliance pathways forward. These final standards are out in 2035, 2037, and 2038. So we're talking about it now in 2021, although it feels like 2019 was just yesterday. This is, there's a lot of work going on right now, we're working on getting the legislation passed, we're doing technical analyses to actually start working on setting the standards and what those are going to look like, doing some cost-benefit analysis so we know what impact this will have for, for building owners, and that the County Council has that information when they're moving forward on this policy. Putting the advisory board together, issuing regulations, and then we have benchmarking data for the Groups 1 and 2 for a number of years now, we can start working on setting their baselines and communicating that out to building owners so they have ample time to plan and prepare. While that's going on, Group 3 and 4 will be entering the Benchmarking Program, followed by Group 5, which is Group 5 are the smaller multifamily buildings. And then Groups 1 and 2 are benchmarking now, they'll be the first to enter into the BEPS program, followed by Groups 3 and 4 after they've had three or so years of benchmarking under their belt to get comfortable with the process. So all this goes out to 2035 and beyond. This is really just a climate-focused planning exercise. So that's one, one big key takeaway is that this is not something that's going to happen tomorrow. So we are trying to find that balance between final standards that help us meet our climate goals, and ample time to educate building owners, get them thinking about this early, and giving them the tools and time to comply with this program. Next slide, please. So we've talked a little bit about where the legislation stands. We, the County Executive transmitted this bill over to the County Council on April 1st. It was formally introduced on the Council docket on May 4th, that's when it got this nice nifty bill number, 1621. The public hearing is scheduled for July 20th at 1:30 PM, so set your TiVo, it's on YouTube. And then after that, we have committee work sessions, we expect that there's going to be a number of them. This is a fairly complicated bill, we don't want to sugarcoat anything for folks, this is, there's a lot of technical work behind this, and we look forward to, of course, coming back and briefing you all as we move forward. But the council will have committee work sessions and then final votes, and then, of course, a transparent regulation development process led by DEP. Next slide, please. So while that's all going on, we're continuing to do outreach to our stakeholders, you all included, and developing training materials. On the first slide, on page 4 of your packet, there's a website at the bottom, that's our Building Energy Performance Standard website. We keep a lot of information updated on there, as well as new resources. Emily Curly put a really nice one-pager together, a kind of just a overview of what BEPS is and a lot of the questions that we were getting. So we were able to answer that in a really slick-looking PDF. We're continuing to do data analyses to set those standards that will inform the regulations. Once the legislation passes, we'll be creating the advisory board, we'll be establishing some sort of technical assistance resource for building owners, whether it's called a hub or some other entity. We're planning on developing programming that will support building owners through this new program. And while doing all that, we'll be drafting regulations with the amount of detail, there's a number of places in the law that we define where things will be called out by regulation. We'll be providing more detail on what that looks like currently as written by June 1st of 2022. And last slide, almost last slide. For any building owners out there who want to help or voice their opinions, the number one thing that you can do is write testimony or letters of support to the County Council. The public hearing is on July 20th, so the cutoff for sending in your testimony or letters would be July 15th, I think, end of day. That's two full business days before the hearing. But also start talking about this concept, this idea, the climate action work that's being done in the county with other organizations and your peers. Stay engaged with DEP while we're drafting regulations. We've got Commercial Energy News that we send things out to, you can always email the energy@montgomerycountymd.gov email address and just say, I just want to learn more about BEPS, we'll put you on a mailing list. If you're interested in serving on that advisory board, raise your hand and let us know, we want to hear from you and keep you on that list. And then if you are a building owner out there and hearing about this for the first time and are terrified of benchmarking even, start exploring what energy efficiency options are out there to make your building more efficient. It's not as scary as you think it might be. There are Empower Maryland incentives out there offered through your energy utility. Some of our favorites are the staff O&amp;M training to learn how to better operate your buildings. It's like an 80 to 90% reduction in the cost of the training, it's a really good incentive. Building tune-ups are also a really good one, and then there are a variety of prescriptive and custom rebates that the energy utilities will help develop with you. The Maryland Energy Administration has a number of grants and other programs at the state level. And then, of course, the Montgomery County Green Bank has really flexible financing for building owners and for residents, especially if you're thinking about the Capital Area Solar Co-op this year, that they're definitely the first place to go if you have questions about green financing in the county. And the last slide, which is our next slide, is just contact information. I hope this isn't the last time that we come to talk to you all about BEPS, and, but our phone lines and our emails are always open, so please drop us a line and let us know what questions you have, or you can do that now.
Thank you so much Lindsay, what a, what a terrific presentation that was. And I want to thank, pass along the thanks to Emily and Stan as well, thank you guys for, for your part in the presentation for being here with us tonight. I see Neil's hand up first, go ahead Neil, and then we'll go to Ryan.
Thanks Mayor, and thanks Lindsay and company for the presentation. I guess at a recent meeting of the Business and Economic Development Committee, we saw an earlier version of a similar presentation. At that meeting, I wanted to hear first from our real estate people to make sure there were no gotchas there. And to my surprise and joy, the response was overwhelmingly favorable. Everybody saw this as something that made a positive impact on the business and their buildings, and was, would be viewed favorably by their tenants, reduce their costs, I mean, it just seems like a complete slam dunk all around. Now, of course, the devil's in the detail, so I'll rely on Deb and other staff to keep you folks honest on the exact details of the proposal, but I just wanted to share with the rest of my colleagues here that, and the public, that the reaction from the business community for this was overwhelmingly positive, and it was great to see that for an environmental, an environmental project that sometimes there's a conflict between making money and being environmentally friendly, and this is exactly the opposite, it makes it everything work for everybody. So thank you, great work.
Thank you.
Thank you Neil, go to Ryan.
Thank you Mayor, yeah, thank you for the presentation. And I think this is, you know, a very laudable objective, and it's something that we discussed at length when we decided to opt into the Benchmarking Law a couple years ago, a few years ago now. And we had, you know, a lot of interesting discussions about what the implications would be both positive and potentially negative for our property owners at that time as well. And, you know, I would certainly encourage my colleagues to sort of go back and, and look at what we had discussed back then, because I think some of those discussions, maybe not all, are transferable to the discussion we are having and are about to have as we go forward with this current legislation. And I appreciate the iterative approach and the data-driven approach that really underlies the legislation's intent and the presentation tonight. And, you know, that said, I agree with Neil that the devil could be in the details, and that's, of course, why you're here tonight, and why you're reaching out to us and, and our own constituents, who are your constituents as well at the county level, to encourage feedback as we go through this process, and, you know, no final decisions being made in the immediate future. I understand that our staff has already submitted some detailed comments, feedback to county staff, and I'm sure we'll have probably additional things to submit as well. I did want to ask, as much as I appreciate the very long time horizon that's built into the legislation, I wanted to ask about worst-case scenarios. And I know that's not always the fun thing to talk about because we're trying to encourage people to do positive things, and that there are a lot of benefits to this proposal, but what happens under the, the current legislation as drafted if a property owner, you know, doesn't comply with a B PIP, or just sort of refuses to comply with the legislation? What penalties, if any, are built into the proposed law? That's my first question, and then I have another one after that.
Okay, that's a great question. So I'm sure that you all can appreciate the, the challenges between the county and the state. We are currently limited at the state level from our ability to fine. We have $1,000 per offense fining cap. As written in the legislation, we're looking at a class A violation for commercial properties, which is $500 for the first offense and 750 for repeat offenses. And going after those repeat offenses can be fairly administratively challenging. There you go. So we are seeking to have some flexibility at the state level specifically for building performance policies like these to make sure that the, the cost of compliance is commensurate with the fines that we might levy. There are some other tools that we might explore too. We're still, we have kind of all options on the table to see if we are not able to get a change at the state level, what would be available to us. But Ryan, to your point, the cycles that we have moving forward, I mean, we're looking at four to five years out before the first interim cycle would come. That has, we've got some time to figure out the right mechanism to do that. We want to make sure that we give owners as much time as possible and as many tools and resources as possible to comply. Fines are not what we're after here. I realize worst case scenario, of course. But we really want compliance and we want progress on our climate goals. That's the main objective.
Appreciate that. And then the other question I had, which I think is reflected a little bit in the staff comments that were submitted in writing from our city staff already. I think you did a great job in your presentation underscoring all the programs that already exist to assist with financing and technical assistance, whether it's pace loan style programs or, you know, the empower and so many of the other programs that already exist. But does the current legislation create any additional assistance for property owners, whether it's need-based or otherwise? And if it does, is it, is there funding? Is there technical assistance? Is there both? Or is the intent really just to sort of have the county rely on the existing programs and steer property owners to the existing programs?
That's also a great question. Right now, we are very fortunate to have as many programs as we do at our fingertips. It's really great that we benefit significantly. And I think that that's one of the main reasons why we can even have this conversation. There are some provisions in the law that provide additional flexibility for what we're calling under-resourced sectors like affordable housing, houses of worship, nonprofit building owners. We want to make sure that this is not an uphill battle, that this is a partnership with the county. And this is a partnership with our energy contractors, our utilities, MEA at the state level. So we intend to establish additional technical assistance primarily for those under-resourced sectors. Currently, at this present moment, we don't have the, the funding and the description of that set quite yet. And I think that that will crystallize a little bit more once the legislation's finalized. We don't want to kind of build out a whole new, brand new program only to have the legislation modified such that maybe it's not serving the right entities anymore. So I think that once we have legislation passed, the conversation about which programs, where the county can fill those technical assistance needs and where the gaps might be. So that we're creating things that building owners will actually use and that they will find useful. So I think that once the legislation is passed, that, that conversation will be more real. Stan has come off me and I think he has additional things to say.
I just wanted to add that the level of assistance needed will obviously be tied to the final standards, which will be established through regulation. So the more stringent the standard, the more assistance will likely be required, the less stringent the standard, the less the system.
Great. Well, thanks. Thanks to all of you. Those are my questions for the moment. And I appreciate the thoughtfulness put into the proposal, into the legislation, into the presentation tonight. And thanks for being here.
Thank you very much for the questions.
Thanks, Ryan. We'll go to Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, everyone, for the very informative presentation. Just one question, it may be a devil in the details kind of question, so please beg off if I'm getting too far afield. So you're moving away from commercial properties, which have, you know, they're a pretty uniform structure. They're usually owned by one centralized owner for the property and maybe they rent out to folks. But I would assume that the owner is responsible for, for the overall compliance. But with respect to residential, you're coming into possibly different ownership structures. And so how does the legislation address, for example, common ownership communities that, you know, may have common areas and then they may have individual ownership areas that could both be utilized to address energy issues. And then you might have, for example, individually metered common ownership communities. And so you wouldn't have a centralized bill structure coming in. You'd have individual ownerships that you'd have to possibly address. And that these owners may be in situations where, where, you know, if they were detached from a larger community, they wouldn't be covered by the regulations and the statute anyway. So can you walk me through the, you know, the thoughts on those types of situations as we move into them?
Yes, I think in one question, you summed up months of work that we did trying to unpack what is a building. And that is actually a very challenging question, even in the commercial space. The metering structure of a building can get very complicated. And then if you're layering on top of it, the leasing structure and who pays for what, it gets complicated very quickly. So to your point, I think that the one example that you gave about a residential structure that if it exists on its own, wouldn't have to comply with this. And that's exactly our thinking as well, that if there is individual metering and basically the unit is not tied to the central system at all, it can exist completely on its own. And there's no common shared space. There's no shared laundry. There's no shared gyms, no shared amenities, nothing shared in the property. That building wouldn't have to comply. Everything is a case by case basis. That is just one example. I'm sure that there are a variety of examples in the county of buildings that we might need to look at the metering structure to determine whether or not it has to comply or do a site visit to see if it has to comply. Because there is a lot of complexity in the built environment in Montgomery County. It is not as uniform as some of our more metropolitan areas. We have a lot of variety here. So all that to say that, that is, it's a complicated issue. We believe that, of course, devil in the details, that our policy as it's written meets that need. It's possible that there are going to be examples out there that we just haven't approached yet. And we'll have to tackle that as, as we find them. But our intention is that if you look like an individual house, you happen to just have neighbors on top and bottom of you, then maybe BEPS isn't the right thing for you. Maybe there might be some other residential policy coming out of the climate action plan down the road that would be more appropriate to make sure that we aren't necessarily ignoring those types of properties. BEPS might just not be the right policy for them.
And I'll just add quickly from a benchmarking standpoint, that the utility will also provide aggregated data feeds. So if you are in an individually metered multifamily building, for instance, you know, it's just a matter of basically collecting all the meter numbers, submitting that to the utility, and they will provide an aggregated feed for the building. So that's obviously the case with a lot of commercial properties too, with multi-tenant spaces. So there's also some mechanisms in place to make it easier to report. It's not like every person has to go in and type in their information, thankfully. So, so there's also some reporting mechanisms that help with that, too.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. We'll go to Mike Sesma.
Okay, well, thank you, Lindsay and Emily for that and the team for the report. I agree with my colleagues, a very thorough and methodical, but well, easily understood, I think. I want to go back to one comment that, or some comments from Neil at the beginning. That it's actually not surprising to me that the business community or commercial property owners would be in favor of this. Going back to our green building ordinance a number of years, we were surprised, delightfully surprised that the business developers and the development community and commercial developers actually were strongly in favor of our green building requirements because I think they understood the economic value of doing that. So I think this is the same thing. Whatever saves them money improves the profit margin for, and income and revenue streams for, for all of these owners. So not surprised by that. So I have, you know, since the devil is in the details, I just have a couple of questions. Really, it's about the advisory board. And I guess one of the things we're always asked about when we do things with, you know, with other parties is how representative that board would be. Would it include owners or representation from the city or municipalities that participated? And then related to that, who actually selects or appoints those board members?
Those are great questions. So we don't necessarily have written into the law city representation. We have the, some directors of affected departments at the county level. But I think that when we are looking to put forward proposals about membership that we're not just looking at down county, that we have the entire county represented. So we do have sector focus, so market rate owner, sorry, market rate multifamily owner, affordable housing owner, making sure that someone from the construction finance industry or financing of building upgrades is on, on this board to make sure that we're bringing that expertise to the table and the energy services industry. So I think that we focus more on the sectors being represented rather than location around the county. But that, I think, is something that we'll be mindful of. We, we don't want all down county developers or all up county folks. We want to make sure that we have a good representation. And thank goodness for being virtual too. We won't have to, you know, be mindful of that. Call me virtually. To your second question about how the board would be put together, it'll follow the same procedures as the boards committees and commissions model within the county council, yeah, the county government. So the county executive will solicit membership through the county executive's office. They'll submit, will put forward recommendations. And then the county council will, the county executive will recommend, the county council will appoint those members to the board. So it's a joint effort to appoint that first board.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's, that's really all I had. I appreciated the questions from my colleagues as well. So it, I guess, if things don't work out, the city always has the option of opting out of joining something like this. But I don't foresee that as a, as an issue going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we go to the public? Loriann, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I believe Neil mentioned the Economic Development Committee weighed in. Our environmental advisory committee also weighed in support of this legislation. And so looking forward to seeing how it's going to impact municipalities and how we can really track the savings that our businesses will have and how that information will be shared with the municipalities would be good to know.
Sure. So when we have properties that comply with the county's benchmarking law, we make sure Emily sends that to Deb. So we get information about who's compliant, who's not, and some basics about the energy profiles for those buildings. And then hoping that we see some results in the, the city's greenhouse gas emissions inventory as well, which the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments puts together both for the county and for the city. So I'm hoping that in years' time, we see some reductions in emissions. I'm not sure we'll be able to say it's only because of BEPS. I hope it's because of a number, a number of different things. But it would be nice to see some progress in, in that, that data source as well.
And is that collection happening quarterly?
So greenhouse gas emissions inventories are, they tend to be prepared every two to three years. So on that first page, that slide that I had shared on packet page eight, five, sorry, you got my eyes checked, packet page five. You'll see that there's 2005 is our baseline, but then 2012, 2015 and 2018. So that's how frequently we would see greenhouse gas emissions inventories released from COG. They do a lot of vetting. Thank you for sharing that. They do a lot of vetting of the data. They work directly with the utilities to get that information. They do a lot of drilling down from state data down to local level data with some very meticulously kept assumptions and records. So that's where we'll see that in, for the greenhouse gas emissions reductions. But then the, the benchmarking law, the data collection is done annually. So, so Emily Curly sends that to Deb every year.
And the cost savings, are you going to be tracking any cost savings, any metrics for that? And how are you communicating those benchmarks or those?
So, sure. So for the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, I don't think that there's much done in the way of costs. But for the benchmarking law, costs are not a required field in portfolio manager. So we get kind of a wide variety of things from nothing to kind of some interesting numbers. And somewhere in there, there's some good data. But costs, it's not a required field in portfolio manager and we don't require it on the county side. But we do have estimates that we apply to the data that we receive. And Emily's put that into a really slick looking scorecard that has gone back out to the building owners to let them know if you reduced your energy use by this amount, you'd save this much on your utility bills. So there's some interesting data about the energy savings and cost savings that you might see as a result of that. So there's estimates that we can apply to the energy data that we see through portfolio manager.
Thank you both for the presentation.
Thank you for the questions.
All right. So this is the time when the mayor and council like to hear from anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this topic. And keep in mind, we have two other topics after this. Tech team, can you play the instructional video for anybody who'd like to testify?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, so I see, well, actually, hands were raised and they were put down. Now hands back up. Okay. Tech team, if you could bring up George Mohallen, please. And, and George, we ask that you keep your comments in more than three minutes. State your name and address or neighborhood for the record and go right ahead. You gotta unmute yourself too, George. George, it looks like you're still muted here. There you go. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I was just testing it. I didn't really have a comment to make. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. No problem. Is there, is there anybody who would like to make a comment on this discussion topic? If so, please use the Zoom raise hand function. Otherwise, we will close out the topic. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. We will end public comments for this discussion topic and thank everybody. This is, as Ryan said, it's an iterative process of, I'm kind of, as we're looking at the, the projection for the last BEPS recommendation in 2038, the cicadas will actually be back that year, which puts everything in kind of a perspective. Appreciate all the thought that's gone into this and, you know, we'll be watching carefully to see how this proceeds to the county council.
Great. Thank you so much for inviting us to present. We'll, happy to come back whenever you'd like an update or whenever we have things to share. So thank you again for the opportunity.
I have a feeling we'll be taking you up on that. So thank you all very much.
Of course, you have our contact info.
Yes.
So does Deb.
Next time, let Emily talk.
All right. Yes, we have a request for next time. We will, we will move to our next discussion topic. And tech team, if you could bring up Rob Robinson, please. And I think we have a couple of people from Montgomery Planning who are part of this discussion as well. Patrick Reed, Jesse McGowan. And Rob, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of the council. Joining us this evening for this work session, we have Patrick Reed and Jessica McBarry from Montgomery County Planning. And the purpose of tonight's work session is they're going to be briefing the council on the planning, their planning corridor forward transit plan. Again, this transit plan is essentially looking at the feasibility of various options, transit options in the I-270 corridor, going from Frederick County down to the district in Northern Virginia. And because I don't want to give away any secrets, if the tech team could please pull up package page 50, I'm happy to turn it over to Patrick to begin the presentation.
Hey, thanks, Rob. I appreciate the introduction. Again, I'm here with my colleague and supervisor, Jessica McBarry. I'm here to talk to you about Montgomery Planning Department's corridor forward plan. It's an I-270 transit plan to look at transit options serving the corridor spanning from the city of Frederick all the way down to Tyson's in Virginia. So you can advance the next slide here. So there are a couple of different major takeaways, but if you leave here tonight, I'm kind of walking away with So there are a couple of different major takeaways, but if you leave here tonight, I'm kind of walking away with three things. I think what, what we really want you to kind of take in during this work session and keep in mind that this is the first of two. We're coming to you tonight to present you an overview. The next time we meet, we'll have some preliminary results available for you all to kind of digest. But I think from an overview perspective, what we're trying to get across is the project's purpose and that's that there's many master planned and speculative transit options that could improve accessibility along the I-270 corridor. But we need a good, clear strategy to ensure that resources are directed to the most advantageous projects. So what does that word or phrase master plan mean? Well, essentially that's a project that the department has currently recommended and it's a long-term transit planning network, our transit plan network. And by speculative, I'm speaking here about options that we get requested to study frequently, like purple line extension are more relevant to Gathersburg, red line extension, things like that. You probably also heard the High Road Foundation's presentation on a monorail concept between Frederick and Shady Grove. So those are other options that we're considering through this effort. Consistent with the direction and values of our forthcoming general plan, which is called Thrive Montgomery 2050, we'll look at these transit options, evaluate them and then package and prioritize them based on the county's economic, environmental and equity values. And once we do that, we'll go ahead and develop an implementation plan that will detail the the high level planning milestones and major steps that would need to be taken to realize the highest priority projects. You can go on to the next slide. So let's zoom out a minute to kind of talk about why we're doing this effort. I'll try to give you the broader picture and then kind of zoom in on a Gathersburg relevant area in a moment here. But what you see on the map to kind of get you situated is the highway, the I-270 highway and the Beltway that's circling DC there. We consider the corridor a series of communities and employment centers, which we call activity centers that are strung together along the I-270 highway and also the western side of the Beltway as well as a couple of points in Washington DC, the couple of other points in Frederick that are connected by transit. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see these pink activity centers, which are locations of interest for this project. You can see most of them are situated on the highway, including the locations in Gathersburg, like the Life Sciences Center, Gathersburg West Activity Center, the Research Activity Center. And again, the Life Sciences Center actually includes Crown as well, which is located within the city. So a number of these activity centers are centralized in the kind of that mid-county, up-county area and that, that's relevant to Gathersburg. You can go on to the next slide here. So these activity centers, all those geographies that you see in pink, they pull in about 664,000 commute trips every day. Next slide, please. And about 71% of those commute trips are made by vehicle as represented by those little blue dots on the map. Those are origins that are being, that are driving or taking transit into one of those activity centers. Next slide, please. And in yellow, you see a smattering of transit trips, right? Mostly centralized around DC, but also further up north in the quarter as well, in the Montgomery County area, as well as Rockville and Gathersburg. These yellow trips represent 21% of the volume that travels or is attracted to into these activity centers each day. Next slide, please. So these trips are served by high quality transit like the red line. Next slide. Also, we've got the purple line, which is currently on, under construction down county. And if you're up in Gathersburg, you can connect to that to get to points out in PG. Or Prince George's, I should say, if you're interested in going east. Next slide, please. And we're also served by the existing Brunswick line, right? The Maryland Transit Administration's commuter rail, which provides service between points in Martinsburg, West Virginia, all the way down as well as Frederick, which connect at Point of Rocks down into places in Gathersburg like Metropolitan Grove, Gathersburg proper and Old Town, as well as points further south of the border as well. Next slide, please. So let's zoom in on, on sort of a, a Gathersburg area that, that kind of might get, get get you a little bit more context about why we need to do this project. So you look at that pink geography again, this is the Life Sciences Center Activity Center. This includes Crown, which is in the city of Gathersburg, as well as some portions of the county as well, like around the Adventist Hospital area. And you can see a couple of dots there that those are again, origins that are being attracted into the activity center each day. Next slide, please. And this graphic here shows you the sort of discrepancy between a 45-minute commute into that area, right? So that blue area shows you from a 45-minute commute for, for vehicles where you can get from to get into the Life Sciences Center each morning and a 45-minute transit trip. It's a pretty big discrepancy. And so this project is really aimed at looking at how we can make transit more competitive throughout the quarter, not just in the Life Sciences Center, but across the quarter as a whole, as well as particular areas in the Life Sciences Center. So if you advance the next slide, we'll go through a couple of options here of ways that we could improve transit competitiveness. Obviously, you are all well familiar with the Corridor Cities Transit Way, which provides service between Clarksburg down through the Life Sciences Center area, through Crown and through Kentlands as well into Shady Grove. You're also familiar with MARK, which exists today, and you might be familiar with the 2018 Maryland Transit Administration Plan, which detailed all the infrastructure and costs that would be associated with improving service on the line. We also frequently get requests at the planning department to study the red line and an extension of it up into points north as far as Metropolitan Grove, sometimes Germantown, sometimes even as far north as Clarksburg. And then again, you're probably familiar with the High Road Foundation's concept linking Frederick and Shady Grove by monorail. So each of these options as well as some other options that aren't shown here, could support mobility, transit mobility on the, along the quarter, but we don't really have a good strategy right now to understand which one of these projects are we going to get the best bang for a buck for, which are the most advantageous? And so this project, the purpose of it is to really look at these different options and to understand which, which should be prioritized in order to set them up for future funding opportunities. Next slide, please. So what's the plan approach? Well, first, we inventoried and compared mode characteristics. So we looked at different types of transit from light rail to hard rail subway to bus. And then we inventoried about 15 different corridor transit options. I say about because some of them were sort of the same option, but different versions of the same option. We pre-screened and retained six options for a more robust evaluation. The pre-screening effort looked at things like travel time competitiveness, access to jobs, whether or not the option supported future growth, general population access and also benefits for equity for populations that don't have significant investment today in transit. We used all those sorts of high level off-model metrics to retain six options. Then we developed metrics to compare the options. Where we are right now, we're in the process of receiving our preliminary results back from the consultant. And we'll go ahead and work to prioritize and package those options based on the metric outputs. And again, finally, the last step in the effort will be to develop an implementation plan for the project or projects that are retained. Next slide, please. So which options were retained? We'll briefly go through the options. A couple, a couple of them are relevant to Gathersburg. We'll, we'll just briefly go through the ones that are not. So you can advance the next slide here. Overall, you can kind of see this is the, the summary slide for the different options that were retained for robust study. Option A is enhanced MARK service. So this is obviously relevant to Gathersburg because of all the additional, or because of all the stops that are located within the city. We are also programming an additional stop at Shady Grove, which is just outside the city today. We are looking at a red line extension that was retained for additional study. Corridor Cities Transit Way as master planned and currently envisioned by the Maryland Transit Administration. Purple line, we'll speak to in a moment. That option was removed from further study after pre-screening, just based on the sheer number of different opportunities for alignments. Monorail and then option F, which is a corridor BRT. I'll go into detail about each of these options a little bit further here. So you can advance the next slide. So the first is enhanced MARK rail. This program's in the model, two new stations that are master planned, one at Shady Grove and one at White Flint. It, it sort of features increased service with 15-minute peak hour headways in the peak direction. So for example, southbound in the morning, as well as new midday and non-peak direction services. So what do you need to achieve these levels of service? Some significant investment along the line. This would entail additional mainline track between Washington DC and Silver Spring, between Garrett Park and the Monocacy River, as well as additional track on the Frederick branch to the Brunswick line. So not, not an insignificant investment. Additionally, you'd need the space for the new stations as well. Assuming they would be advantageous, which is something that we're looking at in the model here. Next slide, please. We're also looking at a red line extension with two stops in Gathersburg. So one at Old Town, basically where the MARK station is today, just proximate to it. And also a stop at MD 124. We're kind of calling this a fairground stop because it's located near the fairgrounds, but it's, it's really something that you could envision closer to Metropolitan Grove. And finally, a stop at the Germantown Town Center. The service patterns that we've programmed into the model match the red line frequencies that exist today or what that, that existed pre-COVID. Next slide, please. We're also looking at the Corridor Cities Transit Way as master plan. This includes the 17 master plan stations that were looked at through the NEPA process that the state did a couple of years ago. And the alignment is consistent with the 30% design that's out there today. The service patterns, pattern includes a five-minute headway during the peak period. Next slide. A purple line extension, as I mentioned, this is less relevant to Gathersburg except by, by transfer really, but we had, we had initially looked at ways to provide a high, a high-quality rail option connecting Bethesda and Tyson's, just because the travel demand patterns were really significant. However, the number of opportunities for alignments rendered it too, too much of a heavy lift to undertake with this effort without additional resource. So we're recommending that this be removed from further study and to be looked at in a different effort. Next slide, please. We're also looking at through this effort, a new rail extension to Frederick. This would include Shady Grove Station, Metropolitan Grove Station, Germantown Town Center Station, Station at Comstat, Avon and Park and Ride in downtown Frederick. This is basically the alignment that was studied for MDOT's monorail feasibility study. We're looking at this as a monorail line, but also kind of keeping the opportunity open for it to be looked at some other, as some other rail line as well. In the event there was some desire for flexibility there, we'll be looking at costs associated with both monorail and light rail for this option. And we're modeling it consistent with what the Maryland Department of Transportation did in their feasibility study. Next slide, please. And finally, this is probably the most complex option. It's a corridor bus rapid transit option, and it has four different service patterns, which I'll show you on the next slide. The high-frequency stations along this corridor, bus rapid transit route are, are basically providing six-minute headways, which is pretty good. Now, the thing that's unique about this option is that the buses assume to be traveling in the managed lanes. And obviously, there's some questions about the project right now for the managed lanes, but it, I think the study of this option shows you the potential of a bus that can run in free flow conditions along the highway. But when it's off the highway, we're modeling this in a sense that the buses, we're assuming that the bus is leaving the highway and operating in its own free-flow dedicated lane. And we are programming these dedicated lanes in on Maryland 118 in the Germantown area, kind of connecting the college to the MARK station. MD 124 between Montgomery Village and Metropolitan Grove, as well as a dedicated guideway or dedicated bus lane is another way of saying that on Gooty Drive, basically connecting to the Life Sciences Center. Now, one of the unique things about these dedicated guideways is unlike some of the bus rapid transit things that you've heard about in the past, it, those guideways can, can be used for other bus service as well. So if you have a ride-on route that operates on the same segment of 118 as this option, it could hop in that dedicated guideway. So those, those dedicated bus lanes would actually have utility beyond the option as well. A couple of other interesting things about this option, we looked at alternating leg service patterns for the 355 BRT as sort of a complement. So service in Clarksburg on Observation Drive, as well as an extension of the Veers Mill Transit Way past Rockville into the Life Sciences Center. So that really connects the down county area with the up county area. It provides a little bit more access for Gathersburg and Rockville to the down county area as well. Next slide, please. You can kind of see the service patterns a little bit better on this chart here. It's sort of like an abstract diagram, right? There's four different service patterns. One is a more locally serving service pattern between Frederick and the Life Sciences Center, and that's that orange goldish color. Then in pink, blue and green, you have a couple of different other service patterns. Pink is really that, that express service pattern, whereas blue and green are providing service to, to different points. And I think Metropolitan Grove is, is a stop that's shared by the gold, green and blue lines here. That's relevant to the city as well as access to Shady Grove, which, which is proximate to the city as well. Next slide, please. Some considerations for the city to, to kind of think about now and when we come back to you during the next, during the next presentation, you can, you can kind of dig in and ask us questions based on the results. But some things we wanted, wanted to point out now is that five of the retained options include new stops located within the city bounds or within the city's limits of expansion. Options are examined across four different performance dimensions. So this is really important. We have a strategic dimension, which looks at things like equity, environmental benefit, economic health benefits, things like your typical transit planning metrics, ridership, travel time competitive, stuff like that. But we also have these three other dimensions as well. An economic dimension, which basically is intended to monetize all the benefits of the strategic dimension. A financial, a financial dimension to look at capital and operating costs, as well as things like Fairbox Recovery, cost benefit ratios, things like that. And then an implementation or risk dimension, I guess is what you, which you could call it, which is kind of assessing, for lack of a better phrase, the cook time and feasibility of some of these options, right? Some of these options, like for example, the MARK or the red line extension, you don't even have to get too far into the weeds, looking at the, the, you know, the, a qualitative analysis of these items to know that if these were to be recommended, they would probably be options that would take a little while to implement because they're more complex. Options for extensions or new services will require operation and maintenance facilities. And so that's something that's factored into the implementation and dimension here. The reason I'm calling this out on the slide is just because, you know, these facilities can sometimes be pretty extensive, right? So we factored in the general high-level planning area of, of these facilities in our implementation bucket. The other thing I'd call out is at, at least the CCT would, or is proposed to have its, its maintenance facility at Metropolitan Grove today, right? At least per their current NEPA work and advancing. And so, you know, we're hoping that we can work with both you and Rockville, show you the benefits of these options for, you know, your public to make sure that, you know, anything that moves forward in our recommendations has benefits for, for municipal, for municipalities as well. Next slide, please. So the next steps from a calendar perspective, what's happening right now, we're continuing our stakeholder coordination. We're here with you tonight. But we're also reaching out with some of our partners like Rockville, the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, the Maryland Transit Administration, working with these folks to let them know about what our work, what we're doing. And we'll be sharing preliminary results with them. Once, once we're comfortable with those, we'll be drafting preliminary recommendations pretty soon after we receive some input. And we're also holding a public meeting on July 20th to kind of bring the, bring the public up to speed since we last met about which options were retained, as well as to kind of provide an overview of preliminary results. In the fall and winter of 2021, we'll be taking preliminary recommendations to the board and October will be taking a working draft to the board. And that would set up a public hearing in the November timeframe in winter and spring of 2022. We're hoping if all goes well, that the planning board draft will be approved, which sets up county council review in late winter and early spring of 2022. Next slide, please. And with that, my contact information is here on the screen. So, you know, you can feel free to shoot me an email if you have any questions. My other colleague, Jesse Cohn, is also managing this project. He's a great resource on the technical side. We'd be happy to talk to you about the project. Any questions you have, if you want to get into more into the weeds about the metrics and things like that. With that, I'll just pause and ask if there are any questions.
Thank you very much, Patrick. And Jessica, appreciate you being here. So I, I saw Neil's hand, but I'm going to get to him in a second. What we're looking at What we're looking at here will eventually be a master plan, which is essentially a speculative. I picked up on the word speculative. And it's a speculative document with speculative projects. And the, the ultimate goal here is to come up with a list of priorities. So if, if, if one day at some point the planets do align and we can, the county or the county in the state or the county in the state, the federal government together can fund one of these projects, we'll have a sense of which of the project, what's the priority list of the projects, is that correct?
That is correct. I think one of the challenging things right now is that there are just so many options in the public sphere that the conversation has gotten pretty convoluted and confusing for folks. And so the, the real purpose here is to kind of select, you know, from the menu that's out there. Imagine walking into like a restaurant and they just hand you this menu that's like 500 pages long. We're hoping that this plan will kind of create a tailor, tailor made menu with, with two or three different options. Sort of a package of how, you know, options can be implemented and which ones would make sense to implement first based on the benefits that could be rendered right away when you think about things from a network approach. So that, that's really the intent.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, because a lot of these projects that you bring up here are just, you know, dreamy. They're, they're, they'd be great projects. So I saw Neil's hand go up first. Anybody else who'd like to speak, speak after Neil, I'll, I'll call you next. I see Mike. Go ahead, Neil.
I'm sure no one was surprised that my hand went up first for a transportation presentation. Thanks, Patrick and Jessica for joining us today and for the presentation and for the sneak preview that I had with you folks a couple of months back. Seems like a couple of months might be longer ago, COVID time. So I think this is great work and I really look forward to seeing the results. I'm so glad that you're looking at so many different dimensions. I know that makes it more work for you folks, but not just looking at the transportation dimension, but looking at economic benefits. For example, I think that a red line expansion, which is probably the most speculative of everything that you see here, would probably have some ridership advantages, but huge economic development benefit that would lead to more ridership down the road. So I'd really be looking forward to seeing what kind of results that you get. Now, my one question at present, since I've seen this before and I already asked you a bunch of questions of some months ago, is the, the timeframe that you had on the second to last slide. Are you, are you, what you're saying is that you'll have the analysis done of all these options in by September? It's only two months away.
Yes, that's accurate. We're currently receiving our sort of initial results on some of, on some of the metrics that we're looking at. For example, we're getting some ridership results back as we speak. We're starting to paw through them, do our QA QC on them. So I think the timeline that you see, it's, it's certainly an aggressive one from a transportation planning perspective. Both our internal team and our consultant have been scrambling. But, um, you know, our, our intent is to try to get this project to county council around the early winter timeframe, or early spring timeframe, excuse me.
All right, that's awesome work. And we'll hold you to that. The other question is, most of these projects are quite costly. I mean, may beneficial in many ways, but certainly more expensive than anything that the county has undertaken in recent years on transportation projects, except for possibly the Purple Line. Are you going to be recommending any, giving any recommended recommendations on funding mechanisms? Or is that outside of the scope of what you're doing here?
That's a really good question. We'll be looking at capital costs and operating costs. We won't be diving into the funding recommendations per se. I think, I think we want to be sure, first off, I think it's, maybe I should take a step back. Each one of these options could have numerous pathways towards implementation and funding, right? Particularly, for example, the CCT strikes me as one that, you know, there, there have been a different, there have been differing perspectives on the best way to advance that project and and who financially would bear the cost of it. We'll be working with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation to think about the actions and things that would need to be in place in order to advance a project. And in some cases, I think, I think council member here is, you're, you're exactly correct that some of these options would require partnerships with the state. Some of these options more likely are the sorts of things that you would expect to only be able to advance with with federal support. And so we might have some general language to that effect. But I think there's a little bit of a hesitancy on our end to try to spell out exactly how something should be funded, because it could be the case that there are other opportunities out there that might be more advantageous that could arise within the horizon of the plan. These functional plans are typically kind of looked at from a 25 to 30 year horizon. So that's a long time and things change over the course of 25 to 30 years. And we don't want to, we don't want to set up expectations to only have one path forward.
All right, if I could make one request, which I've made many times with other groups before, is please let our elected officials locally know about the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority's funding formula. I think it could be applied in, if not exactly, but similarly to help fund projects locally. And I think just building an awareness of the fact that there are mechanisms like that that are, that are proven and might be useful, could be helpful as an appendix or some addendum to this kind of project.
I think that's an excellent, an excellent request. And I think we should definitely in the plan, look at different mechanisms and probably have an inventory of mechanisms of how there are different sources of funding and different things like compacts as as well to kind of move projects forward. And we can definitely look at MBTA and include that in the inventory.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right, we'll go to Mike.
Okay, Patrick, Jessica, that's, it's a pretty impressive presentation. You gave us quite a vision for doing a better job of, or envisioning how we can improve connectivity through public transit in Montgomery County. I think there's a lot of, well, the best way to put it, there's a lot of pie in the sky here, and I think that's okay. I think that there's certainly a lot of challenges. I think Neil touched on the big one is how we pay for this, all of this, or even parts of it. You know, the, the thing, the, the project we're most, we've been most engaged with since I've been on the council is the CCT. And, you know, the city was engaged with that before I was on the council. So that goes back quite a long time. I think there's a number of challenges here. And the big, the, the big term that didn't come up is how do we manage right of way, particularly through, basically through the city from Shady Grove to, to the northern border of the city in which we're really restricted by space and where these various routes would go, whether it's a red line extension, whether it's a mark extension, an additional lane, an additional track to do that when there doesn't seem to be the space available, particularly through the Old Town area. And, and we already know about the limitations on 355, basically from Shady Grove up to Oden Hall. So, and then, you know, not to get down into the weeds, but one of the areas that we're, we are looking at right now in terms of a master plan for the community is the Lake Forest Master Plan, in which there's a transit center there. And I didn't see any attempt to connect that transit center to, even though there's close proximity to, to the BRT along 355. So just some, some questions about how those challenges are going to be dealt with going forward, even when we're looking at a 25 to 50 year, you know, visioning exercise. Those are things that have to be considered and those are, and certainly it is residences and businesses that would need to be, their, their future would need to be considered as these plans develop. And certainly, the one thing about the CCT that that we've always argued for is that we have the right of way already for almost the entire route through Gaithersburg. And I believe through, for the entire route through Gaithersburg and for much of it, north and south of us. So those are some questions, general questions. But overall, this is a very impressive vision and strategic approach to, to improving our transit network. So I'll just leave it there and perhaps you want to, either one of you might want to comment on, on some of those issues that I've just raised.
Sure, I can start. I guess I would circle back to one of your questions in the middle there or comments there regarding the, the Lake Forest Mall, because I think that is a great priority, it's a great opportunity for the city. This effort for that corridor BRT looks at that, a dedicated guideway on MD 124, which is Jason's and Lake Forest Mall. And so the thought is that you could have a bus that could get off the highway and serve Lake Forest Mall, but even as far north as Montgomery Village. We designed that route for equity purposes. I think there, from our perspective, particularly in Montgomery Village, there are places where there is a high degree of low car, low vehicle ownership. And so getting high quality premium transit access there, I thought, was something that's pretty important. We also believe that serving the Lake Forest Mall with with transit to the extent possible is a good idea. Obviously, that you're familiar that the MD 355 BRT is going to try to do that as well. But, you know, making sure that we improve connectivity there, I think is very important. The right of way option is a hard one, right? There are some trade offs you have to make and they're challenging trade offs. You know, there are opportunities to expand right of way that has design implications that, you know, it's not always agreeable to folks in the Seinfeld. There are property implications as well to that. You could also look at repurposing auto capacity. And, you know, there are different schools of thought about whether or not that's something that's acceptable or not. Those are, that's the right of way issue for those bus options. For the hard rail options like Mark or the CSX, I'm sorry, the Red Line Extension. Within the county, the, the primarily the right of way the Brunswick line is on is CSX controlled. And so, you know, that's, that's obviously a challenge and something that would have to be factored in as we look at the feasibility of, of, you know, MTA Brunswick line expansion and also an extension and of the red line to points north. But just because there are challenges, I feel like the project team and the department probably suggests that we shouldn't rule something outside the realm of possibility. You know, particularly if the benefits that are proffered by an option suggests that, you know, a high degree of concentration and focus over a long period of time is warranted. So I guess I'd kind of leave it at that. I don't know, Jessica, if you have any additional reactions here.
Thanks, Patrick. I think just one minor thing that I would add is that the, in our modeling and our work to date, we have included the Maryland 355 BRT in our analysis, assuming that it, that it is built. So we're looking at these projects and how they relate to or coexist with the Maryland 355 BRT. And so that's just one sort of element that I wanted to mention as it relates to the, the Lake Forest Mall.
In some ways, it's tacitly suggesting that the highest priority for the corridor really is the 355 BRT.
Well, that makes a lot of sense. I, you know, I, I just, I think it's important that we, that these have to be considerations because even if it's a, if it's a, you know, decades long vision, there are still people who live here now, businesses that are located now that would be impacted. Their future would be impacted by, by these ideas. So we do have to consider those and then consider the cost of, of acquisition of that right of way and, and what it means for the community. I think adding stations, whether it's on the red, by extending the red line or BRT or, or Mark, they would be game changers economically. And I think even for residents as well, in terms of where they choose to live and then where they, they possibly choose to work. So that's the great thing about the vision and be able to talk about this. But, you know, the immediate impact is someone looks at that map and says, my house is right here. What am I going to do? My business is right here. Where do I relocate? So, but in a way, that's, that's what elected officials have to deal with, both in the short term and the long term. And sometimes that determines whether or not you're an elected official in the long term. So thank you very much for the presentation. I, I'll reserve other questions for later, but thank you. I, I hope that you meet your timeline in terms of getting us the final, getting the final report out and recommendations.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments before we go to the public? Not seeing any. Okay. Well, this is the time when the mayor council would like to hear from anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this topic. Same instructions, if you'd like to speak, just use the Zoom raise hand function. And I am looking to see if anybody raises their hand. I see a couple. Okay. And just, just to note, state your name and address or neighborhood for the record. We asked you to keep your comments in number of three minutes. If you have more than three minutes worth of material to, to deliver to us, please send it, send the balance or the whole thing to us in writing, it'll be considered, just like oral testimony. Tech team, if you could bring up Jim McNulty, please. Jim, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Jim McNulty from Saybrook. I just want to say how excited I am to see these options here and amplify kind of the, the, the points that Councilmember Sesma and Harris mentioned about the economic development possibilities that these could raise, particularly for Old Town and the Lake Forest Corridor. I think it's, you know, anything that can be done to highlight the fact that we have these enterprise and opportunity zones and really bring people to Gaithersburg, not just allow the people who live in Gaithersburg to commute elsewhere, but to bring, bring people to the, the jobs here in our city. And I think it's really important for the, the county and the state, really, when discussing transportation options. You know, our entire transit system has been built to funnel people down county and to funnel people in to DC. And I think it's really important as we look at these next generation of transit options is to make sure that people can come to us here in Gaithersburg and allow the south to north traffic that we really can't do through the Mark train, you know, which stops at Old Town the last time at 8:25 or the, the metro stops at Shady Grove. So I really think it's important that that two way commuting up and down the 270 corridor is going to be vital to the future growth of, of our city and particularly Old Town. I've talked to people who've said that, you know, if we could just get more people into Old Town, that would be a game changer. So thank you for the work that you've done and we will look forward to seeing the options as they come out over the next few months.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Tech team, next, if you could bring up Robert Portanova, please. And Robert, just unmute yourself, state your name and address or neighborhood and go right ahead.
I was responding to the last topic, Solitaire Court. Is that up yet?
No, it's not. We haven't gotten to that yet.
Is there a reason that wasn't put in the beginning? Because it's the shortest?
We, this, this work session was already scheduled. We just added this to the end when, I'll talk about when we get to that topic. Do you have anything to say on this topic or no?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other speakers on this topic? Going one, okay, I see, I thought I saw one for a second. Okay, I am assuming we do not. One keeps flashing. Hold on. Tech team, can you bring up Ann Smith? I'm not sure. I just keep seeing, seeing it flashing. Ann, do you, do you wish to testify on this topic?
Yes.
Okay, go, go right ahead, please. State your name and address or neighborhood and go ahead.
My name is Ann Smith. I live in Gaithersburg, Montgomery Village. I've been thinking that the, I kind of agree what you're saying about Lake Forest Mall as a transit center for, for multiple, multimodal transit. I think that's a very good area for the population of Gaithersburg to get around and use any and all of them and in maybe even the air, you know, access to the airpark for people, because that is a great access spot that would keep the historical part of Gaithersburg kind of intact, which is nice. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Ann. Any other speakers on this topic? Going once, going twice. Okay. Well, then we will end this topic here. And we will say thank you again to Patrick and to Jessica. And we look forward to seeing how this evolves. And we will see you all soon.
Thank you.
Thanks for the invitation. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on to our next topic. And that is the Solitaire Court Stream Restoration Project. I'd like to, tech team, if you could bring up Robbie DeBert, Beth Forbes from our Stormwater. Beth Forbes from our Stormwater Staff and Caitlin Sporick, Project Engineer, Bayland Consultants and Designers. And Beth, I guess, I know we have Tony Berger, our Director of Public Works. Beth, I guess I'm turning this over to you. Correct? You are muted. Beth, you are muted currently.
We're going to start with Robbie Deibert. He is the project manager for this project.
Okay, cool. Robbie, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Tech team, can you bring up packet page 78, please? Thank you. My name's Robert Deibert. I'm the Stormwater Project Manager at the City of Gaithersburg for the, or in the Stormwater Program. Next packet page, please. Tonight, there will be two other presenters helping out with the presentation. Beth Forbes, the Program Manager, she will be taking care of the frequently asked questions towards the end of the presentation. And our design consultant from Bayland, Caitlin Sporick, she will dig into more of the, the technical design approach to the project. Next slide, please. This is a quick agenda for the, the different discussion topics that we will be going over this evening. I'll start off with how we got here. The, the main goals of the, the project and different alternative methods that were considered during the design of the project. Caitlin will go over the engineered design solutions and technical aspect of the project. And as I mentioned, Beth will do the frequently asked questions towards the end. Next slide, please. So back in 2014, there was a watershed study and there was multiple, multiple areas within, in the study area that, that were monitored and, and came back with severe, severe deficiencies. And this segment of stream was, was one of them. The, the items listed here on this slide are generally the most, most interested items for the stream section that, that we're trying to repair and restore and take care of. They are poor biological presence, high erosion. Stream banks are, are very high with deep channel incision and channel deposition. And while onsite doing investigation and assessments, we did find that, that there was multiple other impairments throughout the, the stream section to include public infrastructure. A lot of, there, there's a couple of sections where sanitary sewer lines are, are inches away from, from protruding out of the ground and, and that could cause issues in the future. Additionally, there is a severe area where the stream is encroaching private property. And that could cause extreme danger and safety issues down the road as well. Next packet page, please. So for the, the project goals, what I, what I'd like to mention is that I'd like to, I want to make sure that everyone is on the same page and that, that we think of the goal as an, like an overview and a broad range goal and not just a specific factor of the project. So, so when we're looking at, at selecting projects and, and designing projects, we want to look at the feasibility, the, how efficient it is, the effectiveness, and then the different factors that, that go along with the project. So there, we have regulatory requirements. We have a budget. We have a stormwater fund that we, that we use to pay for the project. And we also have long-term planning to try and put the projects in order that also align with our team's resources. How many project managers we have, how many projects we could take on at one time. So I'll, I'll describe the alternatives and, and kind of relate back to the project goals of what I just said here in a little bit. But, but this, this design for the project is, is the most feasible, efficient and effective way to enhance the environment in this area. But to go, go over this slide real quick, the, the drainage area is 260 acres. So with this one stream project, this will help manage stormwater that drains from 260 acres. It'll reduce flooding and minimize development impact. Later on, Caitlin will go into the, the stream functionality aspects of the, of the design. The next bullet, there are, along the, the section of stream, there are multiple issue prone areas. I've already mentioned the public infrastructure and private property encroachment. But there are other areas, different outfalls that need repaired and stabilized, bamboo and heavy presence of invasive species. And to, to relate this to the, the overall project goal, we could, if we could take care of all of these, all of these issue prone areas at one time in one project for a minimal cost while earning MDE credits at the same time. That's what I'm, I'd like to try and get across here this evening as being feasible, efficient and effective. Next slide, please. So this slide here, we can go over the different alternative practices. So the most, there, there were an abundance of them that were brought up, but these were the, the main focus ones. Reforestation, installing new BN or best management practice facilities and floating wetlands and street sweeping. So for pretty much all of these, like I, like I discussed, we wanted to try and think of the big picture here of the schedule, the cost, the resources, all, all the different project constraints and different site-specific risks that we need to take into consideration. So for example, in the middle of the slide here for the microbioretention facility, I, I did a rough estimate with, with numbers to compare it to the, the current design of the project. And we would need nearly 350 new microbioretentions just to get the same results in this 260 acres of drainage area. The cost for that would be over $14 million compared to the $2.5 million of the current project design. And the most interesting feature here is that the buyer retentions would take up over 20 acres of land. Now, we are disturbing five and a half acres for this project, which is short-term, but after it's restored and repaired, the park, the, the public gets that land back to use for recreation or hiking or, or however you want. So when, when you do these other alternatives, you're kind of, you're, you're losing space and, and our, our jurisdiction isn't, we're just a tiny portion of the, the Chesapeake Bay watershed. So I think that we need to take that into consideration as well, thinking about if we want to move forward with this project and the, the feasibility and, and the effectiveness of it. Next slide, please. This, I actually got off of the 2017 public meeting for the initial design. This was the pond. Next slide, please. So to go, to go into this one here, a couple of the drawbacks for the pond includes increased maintenance. You would need additional safety precautions. You'd have to put a fence up, which would also decrease the park, the, the park space. So you're losing land acreage to the park there as well. And some other, some big drawbacks are, are the other issue prone areas along the stream section that include the public sewer infrastructure, the private property, bank erosion and bamboo growth that's present along the stream. Next slide, please. So this, this slide here is, we've just been getting a lot of questions about, about how much of the park area will be closed during construction, which areas will be open? So I decided to crunch a, a couple of numbers here and, and out of the, the disturbed area, there, there still will be nearly three, three quarters of the park open. The playground will be open, the tennis courts, basketball courts, all of that area will be open. There is, there is a trail that will stay open. That's, that goes behind Brown Station Elementary. And it goes down the, the back behind the school, kind of along that ridge. The main path along the stream will be closed down during construction, but there, there will be alternative methods to, to get to Seneca Creek State Park over by Diamond, Diamond Drive. And, and another thing to mention is that the entire disturbed area will not be under construction at the same time. There's different phases of the project. So, so as you're moving on, one, as one section of the project's done, it'll get stabilized before we move on to the next section and, and we'll be able to see that on, in the, in the coming slides when, when Caitlin takes over. Next slide, please. And that's, that's all I have for my part. Before I turn it over to Caitlin for the more technical data, I just want to say thank you for having me and, and doing the introduction to the presentation.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Okay. So just to reiterate what Robbie said, the project involves the repair of a 54-inch storm drain outfall and 2,200 linear feet of restoration to, it's an unnamed tributary to Long Drought Branch. So if you look at the figure on the right, the storm drain outfall is annotated by the word OT1. So that's where the project limits begin. And they continue downstream through Solitaire Court, all the way down to the confluence with Long Drought Branch. As Robbie mentioned, the drainage area is 260 acres with over 30% impervious area. And I'm reiterating that because multiple studies have shown that when impervious cover is over 10% in a watershed that there are clear signs of declining health, which is certainly the situation here. Next slide, please. So again, in 2017, the city identified 1,300 linear feet of stream in need of restoration. And during the design process, we realized that there were actually flooding encroachments onto private property and that needed to be resolved as part of the project. So the project was extended an additional 860 linear feet to the confluence. I just want to point out while this figure is up that again, there is a sanitary sewer line that runs along the west side of the channel. It's hard to see on this figure, but it is in yellow and that parallel, parallels the entire channel. Next slide, please. So the stream functions pyramid framework was utilized throughout the entire project process. And this is a science-based and function-based project process that's used to quantify the functionality of the system. And the, the pyramid isn't actually shown here, but you can see it consists of five levels. Level one is hydrology and that is the base of the pyramid. And it continues up to level five biology. And the idea is that a healthy aquatic ecosystem, it requires sufficient water from the watershed. It requires the right levels of hydraulic forces. It requires proper bed form diversity in order to support those higher level functions like suitable, suitable temperature and oxygen regimes as well as improved ventics. So as part of the project, what we did is we actually assessed the existing condition of the stream to make sure that it truly was the candidate for restoration. And I will say, I have worked on multiple projects where we have done this and we've actually walked away from projects when we've realized that they are not suitable candidates for restoration, normally because the biology component, the highest component in the pyramid, you know, indicated that it was not a poor condition. So we made sure that this site was a good candidate for restoration. With each level, you'll see that there are associated parameters that are measured. The measurement methods are also listed here. So we looked at specific measurable things basically for each reach in order to determine and document the existing condition. Next slide, please. So you'll see in the lower table that levels one, two and three, so hydrology, hydraulics and geomorphology were all considered not functioning. And that's not functioning, there's basically three levels. There's not functioning, functioning at risk and functioning. So the existing condition that was determined was not functioning with the exception of reach two, which did have a functioning at risk rating for level three. We also looked at levels four and five and actually Montgomery County DEP did a biological assessment. So it wasn't even the city of Gaithersburg, but did a biological assessment that basically indicated that the biological integrity was poor due to a lack of ventics and poor water quality. So using these parameters, we were able to establish specific measurable design objectives. And you can see the design objectives in the top table on the right. These are actually the objectives that we will be using to monitor the project with and determine project success. Next slide, please. So again, the project design goals that you saw on the last slide, they corresponded with the project objectives that Robbie already mentioned. You know, obviously a major project goals to repair and stabilize that storm drain outfall at the upstream end of the project as well as to protect public infrastructure like the sanitary sewer system. That sanitary sewer system crosses the channel in multiple locations. And the channel has actually vertically eroded and there's no longer adequate cover provided over top of multiple sanitary sewer lines. Also, there were flooding impacts on adjacent private property. There's actually one area where the stream meanders onto private property. So part of the project involves realigning the channel off of this person's backyard. As well, you know, other project goals are obviously of course to improve and enhance repairing and buffer. There is a large bamboo grove within the project area and the city is eradicating that bamboo grove as part of the project. Even though it's not really required, you know, for additional credit. But they realize that that is imperative and it's important in order to establish a functioning repairing and buffer. And obviously, the project is intended to enhance stream and repairing ecological functions and reduce sediment and nutrients delivered downstream. Next slide. So here's some photos of existing conditions that I discussed. So here's the 54-inch storm drain outfall at the upstream end. And here is a photo of a typical stream bank. You can see that the channel has vertically eroded and laterally eroded. Next slide. So as a result of the lateral erosion, there are multiple instances of undercut and fallen trees along the stream corridor. Again, there's also multiple instances of invasive species throughout the limit of work. Next slide. So just to give you an idea of some of the site constraints. So just to give you an idea of some of the site constraints, at the very upstream end of the project, there's a public park on the right. And there are there's private property on the left bank. So this portion of the project was very constrained. Further downstream. Is the location where the channel meanders into the west onto private property and that's where we had that flooding concern. Next slide. So we did our due diligence with this project. As I mentioned earlier, we conducted survey geomorphic assessment. We also conducted. Independent habitat and biological assessment in addition to collecting Montgomery County's. Monitoring data. We also performed natural resources inventory which included. Locating and assessing trees with a diameter 24 inches and greater. Even though technically from a permit perspective, we're only required to locate and assess trees 30 inches and greater. We went ahead and collected 24 inches and greater to make sure that we were. You know, providing. We had the most informed design possible and we were avoiding tree impacts wherever possible. We also sent out trilogy letters in order to determine if there was rare threatened or endangered species in the area. Next. So construction is scheduled to begin at the end of the summer. I'm not going to get into too many details about the proposed design, but. The storm drain outfall will be retrofitted and the upstream end of the project that is more constrained will consist of a series of. Instream structures which are very frequently used called ripple grade control structures. Next slide. This is just a photo of a typical ripple grade control structure. And they're intended intended to emulate. Natural control structures that are found in natural systems. Next slide. Back slide, please. So downstream of Solitaire Court, we are proposing a log step pool system with a float plane bench. That was what you saw in the previous slide. And what we're doing in this area is we're actually reconnecting to the float plane here and. So it's important to note that by reconnecting to the float plane, we are improving hyperiac. Connectivity and hyperiac connectivity. Basically, the hyperiac zone. Is where you have mixing of groundwater and surface water. And it is incredibly important to nutrient cycling. Temperature regulation and BEMPex and. You know, one study that I like to cite is. Researchers in Flathead River, Montana actually looked at a hyperiac zone. It's not just the channel that has a hyperiac zone. It's also the float lane. They looked at a hyperiac zone and found that there was biomass up to one mile away from the stream channel. So you know, by increasing that hyperiac connectivity, we're creating a healthier aquatic ecosystem. Now, obviously, the proposed design will reduce flooding impacts off of private property and eradicate invasive species like we discussed. Next slide. So here's a photo of a log step pool system with float plane connectivity. And this is right after construction. Next slide. And again, we will be realigning the channel and a few areas to create a sustainable geometry. Next slide, please. One more thing I wanted to touch on is the proposed planting plan. So. We are proposing 1,200 trees and shrubs to be planted. We're also planting 2,800 live stakes. And high pollinator value seed species. The idea is to create a multi-tiered hydrologically heterogeneous forest. And quick successional species will be planted to provide soil stability and recurring shading. And then mid to late successional species will be utilized to. Enhance wildlife value. I was also asked to touch on the. Some of the post-construction monitoring that will be conducted after the project is complete. So the project will be monitored for at least three years. And again, that function based criteria that you saw is what we're going to use to make sure that the project. Is successful. And so as part of that, we will evaluate lateral and vertical stability of the channel. That's evaluated through profiles and cross sectional surveys. We will document and evaluate the vegetation species and cover. And we will also be monitoring invasive plant species within the limit of work. We will also evaluate on an annual basis, stream habitat using the rapid bioassessment protocol. And take photographs annually. So that's it.
I think we still have one portion left and Beth, you're on mute.
Can we go to page 190? So this is where our fax document is located in your package. We've been updating this as we get more questions. One of the ones I want to talk about is actually on page 193. So people have been telling us that the EPA is going to. Delay meeting the requirements of permits. And we asked the Maryland Department of the Environment a couple of weeks ago. Did they have any plans to extend the permit requirements of our MS4? Permit and the answer was no, there are no plans to do that. So we're really looking towards having this project. Finish out our requirements for our five year. Program to meet our requirements. There's probably other ways to get it, but they're they're not guaranteed. And we know that there are other jurisdictions nearby that haven't met their requirements and have had to do penalty projects. So somehow MDE comes up with a penalty amount, but you don't pay that to the MDE. You have to do that value. Of projects in addition to the ones you need to do to meet your permit requirements. And. Then I guess I'll turn it back over to Judd.
Thank you very much, Beth. So I appreciate the presentation from all three of you. Thank you. Thanks very much. And. I'll just start with a. A little background on on why we're here. A lot of this, the. Actions and programs we've been undertaking with regard to our stormwater requirements. Come out of a. A study done by URS for us in 2014. That study included the recommendation that we do this project here at the solitary court stream restoration. And the study, I should point out that the 2014 study predates. Most of the people sitting here at this dais with the exception of Mike Sessma, Ryan Spiegel. And Lynn Board, I think we were the only ones there at the time. And so this is the second time where we've had a stream restoration project come up and. And we've had some pushback from the public and council members who sort of looked around and said. How did we get here? And and I thought before we. Before we vote on the actual contract here that we have a that we add add this topic to this work session. In order to give some background, not only to the council members and to everybody here at the dais, but. But to the public, just sort of as a reminder. This, you know, a lot of these policy decisions were 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 made sort of in 2014. We started the. The ball rolling at that point. And now this is this is sort of the the impact of it, the effect. I want to point out that. This is not, and this came out in both. In what everybody said tonight about this, this, this project is not just about meeting our MS4 permit requirement. Which for those for people who happen to be watching this, don't know what the MS4 permit is. It's it's a it's a set of requirements that we have to meet from the Maryland Department of the Environment. We're responsible to to mitigate and manage the stormwater that comes from our city. And flows into our creeks and streams and ultimately into the Potomac and then the Chesapeake Bay. And so we have, we have these requirements that we have to meet. And we have to balance a whole lot of things. We want to, at the same time. We're not just trying to check a box here. We're trying to take the opportunity with these programs to do sort of the greatest good. For but also with. At the optimal cost. I mean, these are very, very costly projects. And we want to get the biggest bang for our buck because that's we are responsible to our residents to do that. This project, as everybody's mentioned tonight, is not just before us because of the MS4. Permit. It's also because we have a very real problem of the stream eroding into somebody's private property, which. Would if anybody owned a piece of property and a stream was eroding it and encroaching on that property. They would expect the city to take action in that case. The other thing is the exposed sewer pipe. These are things that we would have to deal with whether or not we were doing a stream restoration. I think they're they're important and responsible. Actions that we that we just have to take. Add to that the fact that that we have essentially. A non-functioning or or. Poorly functioning ecology in the area. And we have, we have this big stand of invasive species there. There's a whole lot of reasons. That sort of got our attention or got the attention of the consultant first and got our attention ultimately in in this particular project. And as Robbie mentioned. Early on in this presentation. What we're what this project would do is essentially service an area of 260 acres. With a with a disturbance of 5.5 acres. And you know, the disturbance is ephemeral. There will have to be some trees that come down. In order to get the equipment in there and in order to relocate the stream and and get everything right, but. And we understand trees will will, you know, will do the replantings and. As Caitlin mentioned, a very substantial amount and very thoughtful. Program of replanting. But we're essentially taking a non-functioning. Or poorly functioning ecology and we're going to be replacing it with a better functioning one. And we're and at the same time, we're going to be meeting our permit requirements. And servicing an area of, as Robbie said, 260 acres with a disturbance of five and a half acres. The alternative and a lot of we've got a lot of. Pushback from the public about, well, we could be doing doing this in alternative ways. And as Robbie mentioned. This, the alternative is is like 350 bio retention ponds. At a cost that is essentially six or seven times the costs. We're looking at here and and the ultimate result. I mean, if we just did bio retention pond, that's not going to solve the encroachment of private property. It's not going to solve the problem with sewer pipe. So I think the the result would be inferior to what we're we're going to end up here with this project. So. I wanted to start with that and I'll open it up for questions and comments from the council members. Just raise your hands. If no, and okay, we'll go to Loriann first and then anybody else just raise your hand and then eventually we'll get to the public. Go ahead, Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, thank you for your thoughts. I joined Beth and Rob this afternoon to take a look at the space. And having gone through this, a similar. Stream restoration project nearby at Blown Park. I understand the valid concerns of our residents and. You know, five acres of disturbance is a lot of. Green space to be to prepare for that will be impacted. And while the space will look very different. You know. I think the staff and the experts have made a very. Clear arguments about the long term improvements and how this. Current work will save us in the long run. We won't have to keep doing temporary mini projects, but. A big project that will definitely will see benefits over. The long haul. And so I look forward to hearing additional comments and I'm glad staff is here with us this evening to. Further explain any concerns that the public may have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Loriann. Do we have any other? Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll reserve comments for after. We hear from the public, but I just had a question. You know, as you noted before, Mr. Mayor wasn't on the council back in in 2014. You know, I haven't really been. You know, intricately involved with this entire process and. You know, I think you can gauge from the reaction and the vote for reconsideration on. The Blown Park Stream Restoration and it kind of took some of us by surprise and you know. Myself, you and Neil went and took a walk with Beth to have her explain the project, that project to us, which is very much appreciated. What I was hoping for tonight, and I'm not sure we're going to get it, is I was hoping for a walkthrough of the project itself, you know, the phasing of the project. The segmentary impact, you know, we mentioned various things that, you know. Are valid concerns. So I looked at the map and I saw where it's encroaching on the private property, but I wasn't able to quite leap to discern. You know, in that segment, what actions were going to be taken, what what tree inventory and canopy would be removed? You know, what are the ages of the trees, locations of trees, the. Current status of the trees, you know, are they being impacted by erosion and therefore degrading themselves? You know, I saw the location of the outfall restoration in the pond, but I didn't really. Have much concept as far as, you know, the impacts in that area. And so on, as far as the various things that were mentioned. Also, what I didn't see in the presentation. Which I'd be interested in again, because I wasn't on the council back in 2014. Is not only the consideration of alternatives onsite, but the consideration of alternatives offsite. In perhaps conjunction with this project itself. So. For example, if we were to say it is critical to address the outfall situation. And repair that and it's critical to reroute the stream off of. Private property. Are there other aspects of the stream restoration that could perhaps be down scoped and and we can use. Mitigation techniques such as the bio retention pond that was proposed, you know, perhaps a smaller version, I don't know. Or offsite mitigation restoration measures. You know, that's what I was kind of hoping for out of this presentation is kind of taking that holistic look. Not only at this project itself, but also the obligations of the city. And other areas that we could meet those obligations if necessary, because kind of that kind of deliberative process. Was what I was hoping for out of this.
Okay.
Can I say, is anybody going to respond from?
I can respond. So I will mention, I'm not sure, I would assume the city has the plans available online. Okay, so like I mentioned, we did conduct an inventory of all trees 24 inches and greater. All of those trees were assessed for their species and condition and they were field surveyed. So we knew their exact location. Those trees, as well as every single one of those trees that will require removal. And or any impact to the root system are marked on those plans. Also. There are many tree protection measures being put into place as part of this project. So. We are proposing tree planking. Which is basically just a protective measure that wraps around the tree to protect it from equipment and there's tree plank planking proposed. Around multiple trees in. around multiple trees inside and outside of the limit of work, anything that we thought might be subject to an equipment arm or, you know, has risk of being injured. We are also proposing mulch with mats to protect critical root zones. Tree root pruning will also be conducted to preserve as many trees as possible. And actually, it is written into the contract documents that the contractor has responsibility to preserve as many trees within the limit of work as possible. So tree removal is not something that we take lightly and it is something that we definitely consider as part of this project. In fact, removing trees increases the cost of a project. So not only is it more ecologically beneficial to try to limit the amount of tree removal that you have, it's also beneficial from a cost standpoint. A lot of the structures that we're proposing have the trees that are being felled repurposed into them. And the point of that is to try to maintain the carbon in the existing system, so we're not removing any carbon from the system. Trees that can't be used in structures, maybe they're too small, maybe they're not a hardy enough species, those will be chipped and utilized as wood mulch on site to help with erosion and sediment control. So I will say, you know, tree removal and tree protection is a huge component of this project. And I also just want to add that the stream is in terrible condition because of us, as we all know. I mean, the watershed is more than 30% impervious. So when that happens, you know, there are multiple studies that have actually shown that pre-settlement times show that channels weren't just these single-threaded channels with, you know, a primarily upland forest with maybe a small riparian forest adjacent to it. No, pre-settlement times show that there were actually multi-threaded channels with multiple wetlands that, and flood plains that were frequently inundated. And there was a much more multi-tiered forest system, so not just an upland forest, but also a riparian forest. Obviously, you know, deforestation, agricultural intensification, urbanization in the watershed has increased the volume of floods reaching the channel. It's deepened and widened the channel. We also realized that the channel was straightened. It was channelized when the sanitary sewer line was put in. So when you channelize a stream, you increase the slope of the stream, which increases velocities in the channel, which leads to additional erosion. And one number, I think that's really important to keep in mind regarding this project, is this channel is currently contributing 760 tons of sediment downstream per year. And that is not an insignificant amount of sediment and pollutants that are, you know, being contributed downstream.
Thank you, Caitlin. We're going to Mike and then Ryan.
So I, I think the kind of presentation that Rob is, was hoping he would have is one that Beth actually delivered to the planning commission. I thought that it was actually included in our package months ago. So I'll recommend that PowerPoint to you, Rob, so you can take a look at it. You know, this stream is basically not quite in my backyard, but pretty close. I've seen the site multiple times. If we look at the plan that shows the specimen trees that will be taken down as part of this restoration project, a number of them have already fallen across the stream or or have their root balls largely exposed. So that damage is being done already to those trees, those trees that we, we would call specimen trees. I think the important thing is that despite, and I, and I appreciate all the advice that we've been getting from various parties about things that we should be doing to address stormwater runoff from various sources, from the 260-odd acres, 30% of which is impervious. I remind people that those communities and properties were developed starting 50 or 60 years ago when stormwater requirements were much different. Any development that happens now, the developers are required to treat stormwater on the property before it's released. So the, the entire design and engineering of stormwater technology has changed over the years. So related to that though, because I think people are concerned about where the water is coming from, where stormwater is coming from. Let me ask Beth or Robbie or Tony, do we have plans to do any stormwater mitigation upstream of this project eventually in various, in various ways? Green streets or bio retention ponds, et cetera? And to what extent are current property owners, whether it's commercial or residential, to what extent are they required to implement such mitigation on their property?
Hi, I'll answer that one. We have three green street projects that exist upstream from this, but we don't have any plans for any other projects. Nothing is programmed right now. We do have an agreement with the Chesapeake Bay Trust, because there are some nonprofit organizations that own properties within this, within this watershed. And they can apply for grants from, through, from the city through the Chesapeake Bay Trust to do restoration projects on their properties to remove, to remove impervious surfaces. And anybody who does a new development project would be required to do some stormwater mitigation for the increase in for the increased impervious area and for the amount of disturbance.
So the, the last, the most recent construction in this area, and includes that 260 acres, was Brown Station Elementary School. Can you describe what they did in terms of stormwater mitigation when they built the new school? You have an idea of what those were?
They have quite a number. They have an environmental site design. They have a lot of bio retention that you can see if you walk around the site.
So they did a better, so they were required to actually treat stormwater before as part of their development plan. And, and any other development would be required to do that now, correct? Okay. Well, you know, I, I think we all appreciate the concern from, from nearby residents, from people who live in the city and people who live outside the city about this. They've been, they've provided some great suggestions about how to do that, how we might help address our stormwater problem, but not one of those. As I, as, you know, as I read through the hundreds of emails and letters that we've received, not one of them has proposed solutions to address the major problems here. The significant erosion, the exposure of the storm, of the sanitary sewer. Remember, this is sanitary sewer means it's coming from your toilets, your dishwashers, your bathtubs and showers, et cetera. That sanitary sewer line, if that was exposed and, and ruptured, the pollution impact would be much greater than anything we're talking about right now. So, and the invasive bamboo grove, as well as other invasives along the course of the stream. None of those issues has been addressed by any of the suggestions we've received from the, the concerned public. And I think that that, we all understand that, I, I think I can speak with confidence that everybody on the dais is a tree hugger. We're, we all have some environmental sensitivity. We're all very aware of the importance of trees and the urban, and the forest canopy and what all that provides to our community. On the other hand, we are stewards of the community and we have to take care of these issues. So I appreciate all of those comments and suggestions, but I think we, we have some serious issues here that have to be addressed. We have an unhealthy stream valley here. And hopefully, these, this restoration plan will restore that and make it a vital region that all of our, that will eventually please the community that, that lives adjacent to it and those who come to visit it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. We'll go to Ryan.
Frankly, Mr. Mayor, I don't have much to add after that. Very thorough assessment by Council Vice President Sesma. Thank you, Mike. I just, I did briefly want to say, I know it's mentioned that a number of us at different times have visited the site. Mike and I took a field research visit to the site again a few days ago and did a pretty thorough walkthrough of the entire length of the site. And then a bit before that, Mike and the mayor and I also did a walkthrough a few days ago of Blum Park. Now, the two projects are different, so I don't want to leave anyone with the suggestion that they're the same, that they're going to necessarily look the same or have the same changes made to them. But we thought it was important to look at a project like Blum Park just to get an anecdotal sense of what the end result looked like. So we could sort of see a before and an after example of this kind of stream restoration work. And, you know, obviously there are little things here and there that you could point out that are, you know, maybe imperfect to the eye of a person who would be, you know, painting their most idyllic version of what the results of Blum Park should look like. But frankly, even just a few months after the end of most of the work on that project, I know a few little things still remain. But even after the end of most of the work there, you know, the, the ecology, at least from a layman's perspective, sort of looking out, really seemed to be doing okay and seemed to be offering, you know, some significant benefits. And, you know, I know there are people who are upset by the disturbance, but I'm hopeful that that's sort of proof, that project is sort of proof that the disturbance really is temporary. And that the end result can be something ultimately better for the environmental and ecological well-being of our city, our community, and ultimately our whole region in the Chesapeake Bay and, and I guess the world. That's sort of the point of all of this, the sort of first principles driving the permit system that we're required to comply with. As the mayor said at the beginning of this conversation, it's not just about meeting a permit and it's not just about dealing with certain dangerous conditions or other infrastructure needs. The really big picture here is that the reason why these permits exist in the first place and the reason why these obligations and requirements are imposed upon the permit holding jurisdictions in the state and in the entire region around the bay is to help save and improve, you know, our, our ecology and our Chesapeake Bay and help improve the environment for the greater good. And so I don't want that to get lost on the conversation, but I do think that this is the quintessential example of the kind of difficult thing we as local elected officials have to deal with in terms of cost and benefit. Right? There's never going to be any perfect, easy answer. In this case, there's, you know, there is a significant cost to doing a project like this. But working through back from 2014 and even before that until now, through multiple public meetings where the public had access to our discussions and the opportunity to participate, led us in a methodical way to the projects that we've picked in order to, as has already been said by Caitlin and Robbie and others tonight, to sort of maximize our ability to positively influence the environmental and ecological conditions when we have all of these limitations. We have geographic limitations as a city. There's only certain places we can go to actually do these projects. We have limitations in terms of who owns certain pieces of land throughout the city and has access to them. We have limitations in terms of what the, you know, size of the benefit will be relative to the cost of a project. And that's why we had to prioritize which projects we use. But as Mike said, we do many other things. We have a whole menu of things that we try to do as a city, whether it's environmental site design requirements, whether it's green building codes, whether it's, you know, pilot projects where we use pervious pavement that actually absorbs water into the ground instead of letting it runoff. We have a whole myriad mix of these things. But no one, you know, of those items will, will meet the needs of our permit or solve our environmental issues. And that's why we need to identify these larger projects that have, as the mayor said, more bang for the buck. So I, I, I understand, you know, the frustration that people have about, you know, the idea sort of conceptually of ruining an idyllic babbling brook in their neighborhood. But I want to assure everybody, that's not our objective. Why would it be? We work for you. We, we don't just want to go around angering people for no reason. The reason we're doing this and the reason, you know, we're willing to balance these costs and benefits is because we genuinely believe it's necessary and it's the right thing to do. And I would encourage folks to think about this, not as ruining, you know, a particular sliver of nature in our city, but rather as modifying a part of a stream valley to improve those environmental and ecological conditions. And in, in some ways, as Caitlin said, maybe to return them to the way they used to be. You know, so that's a way to think about it a little differently. You know, I get that it's going to be an inconvenience. It's going to be a disruption. But I'm hopeful that at the end of the day, it will be something positive, not just to meet some permit requirement, as the mayor said, but also, you know, for the public benefit. So that's where I am, having walked the Solitaire Court site. I agree with Council Vice President Sesma that, you know, the conditions, from my, from my personal view, were pretty bad. The bamboo infestation is really bad and maybe staff can talk a little bit more about why that's not good for the environment, so people understand. I think a lot of us do know that, but maybe not everybody does. And in terms of the, you know, the, the limited number of trees that will have to be removed, which is unfortunate, a number of those really look like they're failing or in a precarious situation where the ground, you know, is basically completely eroded from underneath them. And, you know, they're really unstable. And as Mike said, you know, a number of them have already naturally fallen anyway. So for all of these reasons, you know, I, I'm kind of, at this point, you know, I know we're not voting tonight, but I'm, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of the project based on the scientific need and the, the public benefit. But I still want to acknowledge that I know that it's hard for people who have an emotional attachment to, you know, a beautiful area in their community. And we're going to do the best we can to ensure that it remains a beautiful area, just a little bit of a different one.
Thanks, Ryan. Beth, do you want to, before we go to the public, do you want to speak to the bamboo question? Or maybe Caitlin? I don't know who's best to talk to that.
You know, full disclosure, I am not the lead ecologist at our company. There is a lead ecologist who advises on bamboo removal, the planting plan. You know, we are a multidisciplinary team. But I will say, I know bamboo, it's a non-native invasive species. Generally invasive species attract other invasive species. You know, bamboo acts as a, it's a monoculture plant, so you're turning the forest, it's just dominated by one species, so there, you lose species diversity. And, you know, none of that is conducive to, none of that is typical of habitat for native species.
Fair enough. Thank you. I'm not seeing any further hands, so I'm going to go to the public. Anybody who'd like to speak, just use the Zoom raise hand function, please, and I will call on you in order I see you. Tech team, let's bring up Robert Portnova, please. Just state your name and address or neighborhood and go ahead.
Great. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Super. Thank you for having me. Appreciate it very much. You know, it is, it is pretty devastating when you look at the plans. We looked at the tree inventory and it's, it's like 120 trees with diameters in excess of 24 inches. That is a large number. There are many, many trees smaller than that that will also be clear cut and demolished. In order to get this equipment in there, as you know, and as we witnessed in the travesty at Blum Park, to get that equipment in there, there has to be mass clear cutting, opening up a massive swath to get huge equipment in there. Hundred thousand pound dump trucks and massive supplies. It's an absolute demolition project to the nth degree. We really have not yet received a actual number of trees that are going to be removed in the plan. There's 120 trees with diameters in excess of 24. There are massive 100-foot tall tulip poplars. It's a multi-tiered canopy. It's a gorgeous ecosystem with, with lush vegetation, massive root systems that control banks. There was no problem, as we've studied the stream from Solitaire Court and up toward the outfall, that is mainly a rock base and rock stabilized with that is mainly a rock base and rock stabilized with fortification. Not too long ago, probably halfway down from there to the school, looks very solid. The only degradation is at the very, very far end. So the stream, I would say 90% of the stream is fully stabilized, strong with a lot of vegetation on its banks and stone boulder fortified. You guys could save 80% of this $1.4 million by looking at about three or four areas out of stream that could address this problem and save yourself $800, $700,000. There are areas out near the parking lot of the Korean church where there's an input to the stream there. There's an input coming out of the downfall off of Quince Orchard Boulevard. That could be mitigated with a bio-retention pond near the basketball courts. You could do a mitigation at the NIST downfall on the other side of Quince Orchard. You could do three or four small little retrofits like that for maybe, I don't know, $50,000, $100,000, who knows? And save a tremendous amount of money. You're treating the symptom and not the disease. It's like having poison poured down a pipe and you change the pipe. It does nothing, zero. This project is a travesty and we are asking that you stop it and do not vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Tech team, if you could bring up David Belgard, please. Dave, just unmute yourself, state your name, address and neighborhood or neighborhood, and go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Dave Belgard. I live in Washington Woods. I have been following this project for, for a good while now, and I've attended a lot of meetings, including planning board meetings. And I really appreciate the detailed explanations that Caitlin and Robert gave today about the science that they use and the thorough process that they and the city staff went through. Those type of explanations, I don't think were as evident in previous meetings. And they really went a great, a great deal of a way to help me understand more thoroughly how the decisions were made. And I'd like to note, you know, it's, it's really a credit to the city and the staff for the amount of thoroughness and thoughtfulness that it appears has been put into this project. It's really clear from this presentation or prior presentations, regardless of the MS4 requirements, that, I mean, we have to do this. You can't just sit by while the banks continue to erode and risk sewer pipes and flooding of our residents' properties. Obviously, it's really important that our trees are protected and that whatever possible, we have to mitigate or eliminate cutting especially mature trees down for projects. But, you know, considering this project's needed because of, because of how many trees are going to be removed, I really appreciate the fact that the city is financing, you know, its commitment to not only replacing the trees, but also improving the overall ecology of the area. I noticed for both a couple of times, but, you know, I, I, I would like to urge the city to separate from this project, look further into what might be done to reduce the stormwater surge that enters the stream. You know, when, when Councilmember Sesma asked about what projects were in the area that would affect that, I was happy to hear that there are already some upstream projects in the works, but it still might be worth some further examination, especially considering, you know, as the point was made, 30% impervious surface can make a significant impact. And, you know, I do fear that if the surge is not addressed, that in 20 or 30 years from now, we might again be in a similar situation. So it may just be worth looking further into. But once again, I really do appreciate clearly how hard the staff has worked on putting this project together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tech team, if we can bring up Tim Goodfellow, please. Tim, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood, go ahead.
Yes, I'm Tim Goodfellow. I live in Montgomery Village. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I did submit written comments to the city on June 19th about the proposed Solitaire Court Stream Restoration Project and did receive a very professional response from the city staff. I'm fully aware that the city has requirements and obligations to reduce sediment and nutrient pollution from its waterways as part of its MS4 permit and the Chesapeake Bay TMDL. However, the proposed Solitaire Court Stream Project is flawed and entirely too damaging and destructive to the terrestrial environment and forested landscape within Diamond Farms Park. The vast majority, virtually all of the sensitive riparian vegetation will be removed along the Long Draft Branch Tributary, including over 40 trees that each exceed 30 inches in diameter. Those are the specimen trees. There are many insults to this little first order tributary to Long Draft Branch. One certainly being the proximity of the Solitaire Court lots and houses to the actual stream. Those lots were approved and developed way too close to the stream. That's just poor planning and that's contributing to the problem that you have. So I hope the city has better regulations in, on the books today for, for stream setbacks. Older development without stormwater management was identified as the primary cause of the stream degradation in the 2014 Lower Great Seneca Creek Watershed Study. Water runs off the roads, parking lots and rooftops, gets dumped directly into the stream without any controls or treatment to reduce the velocity and volume of water and to allow some onsite infiltration of stormwater, with a notable exception being the bio-retention cells that the city placed along, along Quince Orchard Boulevard. There are multiple opportunities to address these historical problems as their upstream sources that should be done in lieu of the proposed project. I listed several of those in my June 19th letter, and I'll briefly repeat some here, some already have this evening. One is the large parking lot of the Diamond Farms Swimming Pool, the church and the daycare center. The stormwater from this large lot runs directly into the stream with no treatments or controls. On the NIST campus, there is a large downfall at Quince Orchard Road and Quince Orchard Boulevard that is essentially the source of this little stream. Why can't the city engage and partner with the federal facility to address this situation? There are many inlets and outfalls along the stream system that should be evaluated as well. So to wrap up, the city needs a wider focus for its watershed restoration initiatives and to not rely solely on city-owned land for projects to get stormwater credits. With the proposed Solitaire Court Stream Project, the city is willing to destroy a sensitive three-acre riparian forest that provides wildlife habitat, community and environmental benefit. Just five more seconds, please, Mayor. The proposed project does not come close to fully addressing the underlying causes and sources of the stream's impairment.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. We're going to, again, we appreciate the testimony you submitted and that is part of our record, but we have a lot of speakers tonight. So tech team, if we can move on to Nina Leakos, please. And Nina, just unmute.
Just, I needed a way to unmute, and I just got it.
Okay, yeah, just state your name, address or neighborhood and go right ahead. Tech team, if you could bring up the clock, please.
My name is Nina Leakos. I'm a resident of West Riding along with Mike Sesma. And I frequently walk along this unknown tributary and also along Long Draft Branch on my way to the park, the state park. And while I'm dreading some of the temporary changes that will result from this project, I have faith that the final outcome will be an improvement, and I want to thank the mayor, the council and the staff, the team who have devoted so much time and thought to this project to restoring a healthy stream, to saving as many trees as possible, to getting rid of invasive species and restoring native species to the area. I feel pretty confident that in the end, we will be better off and the flora and fauna in the area will be better off too. So thank you very much for all that you are doing.
Thank you for your testimony, Nina. Tech team, if you could bring up Philip Cook, please. Phil, just unmute yourself, state your name and address or neighborhood and go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Philip Cook and I live in the Warther neighborhood off of Money Branch Road. Thank you, Caitlin, for the presentation tonight. I think this stream restoration project is very important as an environmentalist. I'm looking for the best possible outcome for the trees, wildlife and ecosystem. So I'm advocating for the least amount of trees to be cut down. Tree removal and soil disturbance could leave the area susceptible to invasive species of plants. I know Caitlin mentioned that they're going to monitor this area for three years, so I think that's, that's a good thing. And, and that was my concern. Thank you for letting me speak and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Philip. We will move on. Tech team to Bethany Brady, please. Bethany, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Bethany Brady. I'm at 35 Solitaire Court. So obviously, this is a very important topic for me. I want to address, I think, three points is what I'm going to address. First of all, when you're talking about the private property encroachment, that is right next to my property at my neighbor's house. So you keep talking about the encroachment on this property, and yes, based on the stream diagrams, it is an encroachment. However, that happened a long time ago. That has been fortified with a rock wall that I don't know when it was installed, but it hasn't moved since at least 2007 since I got here. Second, I want to talk about the project history. So back in 2007, there was the other alternative broached. I didn't attend that meeting, but some of my neighbors did. So that was a pond that would have taken over our recreation field and the community was upset with that because we have soccer on track and volleyball and it's a concert venue as well. So obviously, there was pushback against that. However, we expected there to be other retention pond locations selected instead. For instance, there's, there's two unused land areas very nearby that we expected that to happen there instead. Thirdly, based on the earlier variance meeting this year, I appreciate Mr. Wu's request for more specifics. So of the 30-inch diameter trees, there are 49. One of them fell down thanks to Beth's check on our streamwalk. So there's 48 30-inch diameter fields or trees. And then 19 remaining ones would be removed. So out of 49 or 48 that are left, 19 30-inch diameter trees would be removed and then critical root zone impacts to another nine. So with the large canopy trees, we're losing potentially more than half of those large canopy trees. And I wonder what this does to the area, what does this do to the temperature in our forests that everybody seems to enjoy, including myself? And also, I, I just want to thank Robbie and Beth for the streamwalk. I appreciate that and for Mr. Wu for his extra questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. Bethany, we'll move on. Tech team to Mary Kay Smith. Mary Kay, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mary Kay Smith and I'm currently leader of the Seneca Creek Watershed Partners. I actually had planned to say something else and I have sent in an eight-page document, which we spent a lot of time in preparing and I do hope will be read. And then there was an additional several pages of macro-invertebrate sampling that has been done in this area where we found that there were more present than had been reported in earlier, what the city had found in the 2013 study. But I, I feel compelled to respond directly to some of the things that have been said because it feels very much like what the information that we have sent in to the mayor and city council have, has not been read. I don't know if it's possible because the things that have been said today so counter what we have tried to express. So for example, cost, we hear this is a good bang for the buck. But really, shouldn't the city consider something more than just money when you're making a decision like this? There are terrible costs when you are removing a healthy riparian stream woodland and this is adjacent to a state park. And although there are some pockets of invasive plants, such as the very distinct pocket of bamboo that is just in one area of the stream, in other areas, this is really exceptionally good quality riparian forest with trees that range, on average, those trees that are 24 inches of the particular species we're talking about, age that typically are between 70 and 170 years old. And any of those, that many of those trees are more than 24 inches and extend up even beyond 30 and 40 inches. So there's at least one specimen tree, not, not the red maple that came down that was 60 inches, but a, a healthy shagmark hickory that's approximately 230 years old that started growing in 17, in the 1790s. There are multiple oaks, oaks are a keystone species for our habitat area. And this is not just, we think they're beautiful trees and we're sad to see them go. No, they're essential. They are doing so much under the ground with their roots in terms of providing for the health of this stream ecosystem as well as above ground. And if you want to, I mean, I've, I've directed you to read your own sustainability study that has multiple pages on both the budgetary benefits of trees and their impact on people's health, their benefit in the ecological system, the reduction of temperature, both air and water, which by the way, the stream will be much hotter as it leaves and it will impact what can live in the stream and also may have impacts to cooperative.
Thank you, thank you very much. You have submitted a few things to the record and we appreciate it. But we do have other speakers, so I'm going to, I'm going to have to cut you off at the three minutes.
Okay, thank you. But I must just say, this is not an ephemeral disturbance. You're taking down trees like the oaks that could live another 600 years if they weren't cut down.
Thank you. Thank, thank, we, we understand the point. Okay, we're going to move on. Tech team to Donna McDowell, please. Donna, just unmute yourselves, state your name, address or neighborhood, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Donna McDowell and I live in Gaithersburg. And I am interested in stream restoration in general through some work in the county.
Donna, tech team, could you pause it for a second, please? Donna, we, we asked that you state your name, address or neighborhood. We, we, city is not going to cut it. Please go ahead.
Oh, okay. I live in the Etchesin area and, which is a Gaithersburg mailing address.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I've been interested in stream restoration through some work in Montgomery County and I generally consider stream restoration to be in quotes because I don't think stream restorations generally restore streams. They tend to actually destroy natural areas and turn stream valleys into engineered drainage ditches. Now, I wanted to address some of the comments made specifically tonight sort of as an objective observer because frankly, I'm not really familiar with the particular area. But just watching or listening to this as sort of an objective onlooker, I, I want to second Mr. Wu's questions. He asked for a detailed map of the stream and what's happening where. Where is the heavy machinery going? Where are the bulldozers? What trees are being taken down? And it, it seems that information was not provided. Just listening to some of the testimony, I'm pretty horrified by the loss of these very mature trees. I mean, these are mother trees. And if you know anything about the latest research on trees, you take out one of the mother trees, you're destroying trees around that tree. I also wonder why not consider stormwater mitigation first? Look at that, look at possible measures to control the stormwater runoff at the source and then see what additional measures need to be taken. I sort of feel like you're trying to take an appendix out with an axe in the day and age when we have laparoscopic surgery, so to use a little medical analogy there. So basically, those, those are the main, the main points I wanted to make. And just finally, I wanted to say that I've had my own issue with stormwater runoff where it was not controlled by the county in my neighborhood. And as a result, I've had just horrific erosion. And during a big storm, my neighbor's pond was blown out. So who's to say that this stream restoration that's proposed won't work in the end? A big stream, a big storm could just destroy the whole thing. So I, I would suggest you look at controlling stormwater at the source and don't destroy those trees. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Tech team, we can move on to Carolyn. Tech team, we can move on to Carolyn Randall, please. Carolyn, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood and go ahead.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Randall. I live in Mill Creek Town off Shady Grove Road, so I'm not a resident of Gaithersburg. I hope you let me speak anyhow. I'm a member of all the organizations that were mentioned tonight. An active environmental lover. A couple of things, I was really kind of shocked frankly, to hear the mayor and I think one other council member talk about the terrible condition of this forest, this riparian forest and how bad shape is it? When I, I have several friends, four to be exact, that live very close by and I walked that, that, those woods. One of the reasons I love it is because it is a healthy riparian forest and unlike other forests in Montgomery County and like you know, Lake, Lake Needwood or some of the other, Lake Frank, the, the, the ground is not scoured clear by deer. It is a lots of undergrowth, lots of understory. You can't see the ground most of the time except for the pathways. It's absolutely stunning and it has thousands and thousands of native plants that I can't see anywhere else around here. Except I would say Upper Rock Creek Park and Rachel Carson also have fabulous, but it's competitive with them. It's, it's, it's not, I don't understand the comment that it's in terrible shape. And I would be interested in the Montgomery County's biological assessment. That would be an interesting document I'd like to read. I haven't seen that. I, I admit I heard about this project only recently, so I'm late to the game here. But the other comment I wanted to make was, and this is a lot of duplicate because people have been making the same comments, but it seems to me that you address a problem like this before it gets to the stage where you're in the creek. If stormwater runoff is an issue, you first look as long and hard as you can at how to prevent that water from getting into the stream in the first place. As opposed to stopping at halfway down. And I absolutely second the last speaker who said when a good big storm comes along, it's gonna just, you know, wash away that rip rap. I've seen that happen before. That is not a strange occurrence. And I think we're into the era where we're gonna have many, many big storms. My final comment is you talk about these big specimen trees that are greater than twenty-four inches. Those are succession trees. Tulip poplars are wonderful fast growing succession trees. The keystone species are oaks. And you, nobody's mentioned the oaks and yet there are oaks that are the same age but are not that big because they're slow grower. Those are keystone species that, that have more habitat value and food web value than any other species in this country. Six hundred different species get their food and nutrition off of an oak tree and yet we're just cutting them down like they're nothing. So I guess that's really all I have to say because I don't have much time, but just please look at things before the water gets to the stream. Thank you very much. And I appreciate all the work you guys have done. I know it's, I know it's hard.
Thank you for your testimony. Tech team, let's bring up Lynn Parsons, please. Lynn, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood. Go ahead.
Lynn Parsons, I'm in Parkside condominium in Bethesda, Maryland. I'm not a resident of Gaithersburg, but I also am concerned about what's happening in my neighborhood. There's a stream restoration underway. And I was just this evening at Falls Reach a little bit further away in Rockville and the, the results of that restoration, though it has managed to, to enforce the, the stream sides, the local area all around where the streams are is heavily invaded with invasives. And by removing that tree canopy, you just open up the area for whatever invasive species are there to just move in and take over. It takes a long time for those trees to grow up to be a canopy again. And the restoration work for, for a weed warrior is hours and hours and hours of labor. So I hope that's taken into consideration. I am also of the opinion that mitigation before it gets into the streams is really important because if we're just doing patchworks, there's gonna be sewer lines that are gonna be uncovered all the way down the streams if, if we don't start solving this problem. So I, I am concerned about the, the sewer water. Certainly we don't want that in the stream, but I feel like whatever we do to patch that and then get the water out of the streams and recharge our water tables at the source. So thank you for letting me invade your Gaithersburg space, but I, I wanted to make that, those points.
Not an invasion at all. We're very glad for your testimony. Tech team, if you could bring up Tracy Rulo, please. Tracy, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks, Mayor. I'm Tracy Rulo. I live in the Lakelands in Gaithersburg. I've supported environmental advocacy and action in the city of Gaithersburg and Montgomery County for over a decade now. And I'm here tonight less because I have an opinion on what the right choice is and more because I have concerns about this backlash against stream restoration that I've been seeing in public fora at both the city of Gaithersburg and Montgomery County more broadly. Some of the issues that we've talked about tonight, I was actually scheduled to be at Falls Reach. We canceled because of the rain at the last minute. It sounds like the previous presenter was one of the folks who, who did end up showing up. I think many of the concerns that have been put forth on the public record are valid. I completely agree. Particularly about needing more frequent communication with local communities on projects such as this one. And we found at the county level that more frequent communication helps a lot. However, I think tonight's presentations and the discussion by council member Sesma and Spiegel and some of the commenters echo my sentiments. It's a difficult question and we need to consider all sides of the issue. This overall loss and degradation of aquatic habitat is the main issue that stream restoration is addressing. And, and you can include the hydro, hydro, hydrologic processes in that one. The removal of the system of mature or the ecosystem of mature forest is essentially the complaint. And we want to think about these things as, as trade-offs. And what we're doing is we're replacing mature forest with a different environmental system. In this case, additional improved floodplain habitat or early succession forests. You know, these, this, this sort of, these trade-offs, you know, we need to think about the benefits of both sides. And I think that and that sometimes get lot, gets lost in the conversation. Early successional habitat and healthy wetland habitats are some of the most productive habitats in Maryland. And they're known to provide great habitat benefits for wildlife, generally better than mature mid-successional forest, which is what's being replaced. You know, I'll also point out probably very unpopulately that mature tree canopy is very abundant in, in Montgomery County. A third of our land base is forested and additional fifty percent of, of mature tree cover is in our developed areas. But the real reason I'm here is because my biggest concern is about improving water quality. And I think that the presenters tonight did a really good explanation of talking about water quality and, and bringing that back into the conversation because it seems to be that this is now about the trees and not about the water quality. And I just want to keep the focus on that, on the Chesapeake, on the Potomac, on the sediment that's going into the water, on the drinking water intake valves just downstream. And then I guess the last thing I think we need to remember is that, you know, the natural system was engineered out of existence long ago. Caitlin noted that before. And so I think we need to remember that continued maintenance and management of our stream valleys is gonna be needed to achieve our mutual environmental and social goals. And thank you guys all for the work that you're doing and your continued dedication to the city.
Thank you, Tracy. We appreciate it. Tech team, we're gonna move on to Patty McGrath, please. Patty, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Patty McGrath. I live on Edison Road in Potomac, Maryland. And I was also on the walk through the Falls Reach restored stream this evening. I would echo everyone's concerns about removing mature hardwood trees. I think the, the trade-off of installing two to three-year-old fast-growing trees in their place is, is, is not, is, it's not a good trade-off. But my real concern is the implication that this kind of a project removes invasive species and promotes native plants because that's the exact opposite of what I observed this evening. Acres of Japanese stilt grass. Acres of it. All along the restored stream. Other, other invasive species that I don't, I'm not familiar with the exact names, but if anybody wants to go to Falls Reach with a botanist, you can, you can list ten, fifteen, twenty invasive species completely carpeting the area that was bulldozed and shaved off. This is not a floodplain that, that is a good trade-off from the mature riparian forest. It's not a good trade-off at all. If this project actually will provide native plants as ground cover where the land has been completely denuded, then I would say it's probably a first. Because apparently it hasn't happened in any of the other previous stream restoration projects. And that's my main, my main concern with this entire thing. The devastation of the ecological system that's in place is not traded off at all by the reduction in the in the sediment removed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Tech team, if you could bring up Debbie Saravia, please. And Debbie, when you just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Debbie Saravia. I live in Seabrook. I'm an environmental scientist, naturalist. I would like to suggest some modifications since it looks like this project is, is gonna go. I have some suggestions that would greatly improve the project and possibly will impact the design too much. Caveat, of course, I'm not an engineer. Note, my comments are about the three plus acres of forest, the terrestrial component, not the stream itself. Which I have also said in the past is in bad shape. I will not say the same for the terrestrial riparian forest. First, I want to emphasize the forest ecosystem is more than just trees, although the trees are the most obvious feature. The riparian forest here is healthy based on a variety of native species, various age and size classes of trees and the variety of forest-adapted native voracious layer and the relative lack of deer browse impact. Very unusual. Yesterday I visited a stream reconstruction project that appears to have been done responsibly. The access road is about twenty feet from the string. That helped to minimize the project footprint. For the Solitaire Court, the temporary access road is fifteen feet wide and for some reason is eighty feet away from the reconstructed and original stream both. All the vegetation between the stream and this temporary road would be removed. So we could consider reducing the width of the road to say twelve feet and moving it closer to the stream, such as in this other project I observed yesterday. The floodplain itself is supposed to be cleared and after construction planted appropriately with a riparian forest mix. We can improve and leverage this plan by incorporating several large forest retention patches that would provide seed banks and shade and control weeds while the rest of the area is establishing. There is already such a patch appearing on the plan, looks like about two thousand square feet. And again, it would be important to retain all the vegetation within that patch and not just the trees. Also, there are many existing large decaying logs in the stream and the floodplain. These are important habitat elements. They should also be retained in, within these patches. Finally, there is an existing stable section by the playground below the outfall proposed plunge pool. This section could also be incorporated into the, the design. I know it's easier to start from scratch, but in this case, the riparian forest is worth the effort and expense to work around. So I hope we can maybe incorporate some of these forest patches. I think that would greatly improve this project. Thanks so much for your consideration and for holding this meeting.
Thank you very much, Debbie. Do we have any other speakers? I'm not seeing any hands up at the moment. Okay, I see a couple more. Tech team, if you can bring up George Mulholland, please. George, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood and go ahead.
My name's George Mulholland. I live at eight eight two Diamond Drive, just about. If the sun were up, I would be able to almost, I could actually see the creek. I have a little bit different take on it. This afternoon, I was finishing a hike around the, the lake and then coming back toward my house, walking along Long Draft Creek. And then all of a sudden it started raining and it reached a peak and I decided as I got to where I normally put my canoe in, I'd walk along the creek. I was just curious. I've never been there when it was, I think we had about an inch of rain in maybe an hour or something like that. But anyway, I walked along it and I was kind of surprised that the water was relatively clear. There are a few spots where there was mud coming in. I was a little bit appalled at the biggest flow. I mean, there's the flow from the Solitaire Branch, there's the Long Draft Ranch. But then there was also the flow from my backyard and a few other yards, the water coming down Long Draft Diamond Drive to, to the creek. It looked, there's a bunch of rocks that goes over and looked like a small Niagara. Debbie was there, she saw it, I'm sure. But it made me think maybe there's something. In fact, Debbie suggested there's something I should do with my basketball court in the backyard, but maybe there's things that we could do in the neighborhood to reduce that significant outflow. But Mike, a question I, I would ask of might be Beth or Caitlin or Rob, all of them have helped me. They've taken me on tours and answered questions. But suppose you have a rain like we did today, what would the stream look like? We talk about a floodplain. I somehow was visualizing with the slot, the sort of flat trajectory that the water, if you have a, a big enough rain, it would go in the floodplain and the sediment would settle there or the water would settle and it wouldn't go downstream. But I didn't, I'm not sure if that's really what might happen. Two other questions, I, I did a Google search. It seems like not much maintenance is required for this type of project, but I'm not sure whether that's really true in the long run. And the other thing, will, will children be able to, with the new design, it looks like it might be more child-friendly that they could wade in the water, play in the water, whether that is being built into some of the designs in terms of hiking trails along the stream. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Mike Sesma, I've talked with, I've talked with Judd. Appreciate the conversations and hoping the best for the creek and for you know, the water issues in, in Gaithersburg. Thank you.
Thank you, George. We will, we'll get to some of these questions after the testimonies. Tech team, if we can bring up Lauren Hubbard, please. Lauren, just unmute yourself, state your name or name, address or neighborhood. Go ahead.
Hi there, thank you. My name is Lauren Hubbard. I live at one seven eight one seven Hollingsworth Drive in Derwood, Maryland. So I'm not in the city. But I am a concerned citizen and I do projects in the city. Getting a public involved in managing their stormwater on their own property through some grant funding. So I'd like to raise a couple of points, actually, Mr. Mulholland raised some of them, and that is pressing for more upstream projects rather than getting the storm, hitting the stormwater when it's finally actually arrived at the stream. I'd really encourage the city to take a different tact in the future and hopefully even for this project to tackle that upstream effort and really get the community involved. It seems to me that this community hasn't particularly been asked to do anything because they seem to have been largely unaware of even this project. So I don't think they're particularly involved there. I'd also like to point out that when reading through the documents on this project that were part of the agenda packet, I noticed in the Q and A section, when asked about the wildlife and what would happen to it, the answer was something along the lines of it would just move and then return. And I have to disagree with that. It's not possible for, for example, a nest of chickadees or woodpeckers or what have you to simply move and return. They're, they're going to die. And I, I do think that you have to be honest with the public about what the unreal impacts are on, you know, wildlife in these events. It's, it's just not something you can replace. Coming to you as a plant biologist and geneticist, I'll also point out that when you mow down the forest, that will happen as part of this project. Replanting it, you know, you just don't recover the genetic diversity that was there. That's part of, you know, the history of Maryland, really. This area has a unique history genetically. The plants here are special and represented in that forest. You're not gonna get that back. That's just gone forever. It takes a very long time to recover. Finally, I noticed that the mention about the maintenance for this project was it was described as part of the output of the contractor. And I would urge you to begin with the maintenance plan. And I would urge you to begin with the maintenance plan because that impacts what you, how you establish the plantings, how you are establishing the plantings will determine the kinds of maintenance that you do. And I know the city is already struggling to meet the maintenance needs of their other projects. And this project deserves to have a high level of quality maintenance in order to avoid the inevitable invasives that tend to happen in these projects. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your time and thank you all of the board members for being there.
Okay, thank you. Tech team, if you could bring up Ann Smith, please. Oh, well, Ann, Ann, I'm not sure her, there was a thumb, there was a thumb up there. A raised hand there. I'm not sure if she wants to speak or not, but is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this topic? Okay, Ann Smith, there is a raised hand and then there's not. Tech team, could you bring up Ann, please? Ann, can you unmute yourself? Do you want, you wish to testify?
Just briefly, yes, thank you.
Okay, please state, state your name, address or neighborhood. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Ann Smith. I live in Wayridge Drive in Montgomery Village. I back up to Great Seneca Stream. I was the original president of Seneca Creek Watership Partners. And one of, I actually was, I read the URS report in 2014. I was, we started in 2013. The URS report was done as around the same time as the lower Seneca Creek. The problem with these reports is the, the layperson or even the president of a watershed group does not, has not does not know where those reports are in the process. And the public input for this project before recently was better than the project that was completed at Blum Park, but still not very sufficient. And you see that there's a lot of, you know, there could have been better public input for the city earlier on. The other thing is the amount of imperviousness in the city. It's hot. The water is going to be hot there. The fish are not going to do well going into the state park. The sediment, yes, does need to be improved. I would request that much protection of our trees in that area because I've seen stream water projects done by the State Highway Administration that were, that didn't get rid of all those trees. So I don't know why. I don't know if it's because we're going for the low bid contractor on this job, but we need fewer remove, less removal of the trees. I also have one other short thing is that the city of Gaithersburg, they're, the properties are abutting just the very edge of these rightways and floodplains. And that's an issue. That's an issue with the private properties abutting up to this area with their sewage pipes. That's it.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Is there anybody else who wishes to testify? Just use the Zoom raise hand function. Go in once, go in twice. Okay. All right. Thank you all for a lot of great testimony tonight. So I want to start with staff first and then we're, then we're going to go to Ryan, then we're going to go to Rob. And I guess Beth, maybe I'll start with you and, and you can pass questions to Caitlin or Rob or to Tony if you like, but a lot, there's been a lot of testimony about upstream projects, addressing, addressing stormwater before it gets into the stream. What do you, what do you say to that?
Two things, that there aren't that many places to put those upstream projects. And doing those projects are about an order of magnitude, about 10 times the amount of money per credit equivalent credit acre.
Okay. George Mulholland had a couple of very specific questions. If the, if you could sort of paint a picture of how the, how the repaired, the restored stream would handle, what would it look like during a big rain like we had this afternoon?
That's a good question for Caitlin.
Yeah, so the downstream of Solitaire Court, the channel is designed to overtop its banks more frequently. So it would overtop between the one and five year storm event. So it would be, there would be a floodplain. There would be a much larger floodplain. There would be a larger hyperex zone. And yeah, you would see water getting out of the channel. And the reason for that is if we can get water out of the channel, we're reducing shear stress in the channel, we're reducing velocities in the channel, we're dissipating energy in the channel, which reduces erosion. It also, you know, allows for an increase in hopefully an increase in ventic species because species can't really survive in a channel that sees massive flood peaks travel down it. So you know, there are a lot of benefits to getting water out onto the floodplain. One more thing I wanted to comment on is the flooding encroachment. So I didn't want to get into too many details, but in addition to the channel having moved onto private property or meandered onto private property, there is also the 100 year storm event has actually increased. And the building restriction line associated with that 100 year storm event is now passed where it was originally platted. So that is a concern, you know, the fact that the channel has moved. And even if the channel hasn't necessarily moved onto private property, flooding associated with that channel, associated with very large storm events, the 100 year storm event has, has moved. And you know, is potentially near private property. So that's another issue that we're trying to address is making sure we're providing a floodplain that will reduce the 100 year floodplain on private property.
Thanks Caitlin. And if this was, if it was a little earlier in the evening, I'd get into explanations of the 100 year, 100 year events and all that kind of stuff. But, but I want to sort of keep us moving because it is late. How much maintenance does, will this require moving forward? Once the stream is, once the project's done, Beth?
Hopefully no maintenance, but we're going to, we're required to monitor it annually for at least three years. And if things don't look really well, like they're going well, it's a five year monitoring time. But then to keep the credits, we have to inspect it every, once every three years. So we're going to keep, keep on inspecting it and repairing it as necessary. Hopefully it won't be much maintenance at all.
Mayor, if I could.
Please.
Beth, you and I had also discussed, there were a lot of comments about invasive species coming back without maintenance. So to be clear, you're talking about the actual stream part of the maintenance, not necessarily the plantings and other things that we would maintain. Is that right?
The planting has a two year warranty. So we'll be out there regularly checking to make sure that the plants survive. But yeah, invasives are part of the, the monitoring plan. So we'll be out there annually looking to make sure that they aren't where, where there are areas of invasives coming in.
So Beth, we got a comment from Debbie Sarabia about the, the foot, the footprint of the, I guess, ingress and egress for the, the big vehicles going in there. And I, I, I'm not conversant with how, how big the, the, this footprint is, but she was very specific. Do you want to respond to that?
I think that's another good question for Caitlin.
Sure. So minimizing construction footprint is really important. It's a huge consideration. So the location of the access road downstream of Solitaire Court, it, it's really, it looks far away from the channel, the existing channel and the proposed channel because a large part of it follows the existing trail that's out there because we saw that as an opening in the canopy and a way to avoid impacting trees. So that's primarily the access road follows the existing trail, which will be restored after construction. But we selected that path in the field as a way to mitigate impacted trees. The access road, it ranges from 12 to 15 feet wide. You know, the 12 feet, I believe, was mentioned. So that's a pretty standard width for the machines that are required to do this type of work. 15 feet is, you know, allows for a little bit more of an efficient operation in, in some instances. So.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. I'm going to Ryan, then we're going to Rob, then we're going to Neil.
Thanks, Mayor. I know the hour is late. I just wanted to make a couple of quick points. First, in response to some of the questions from the public, I can't speak for all of us on the mayor and council, but I believe all of us endeavor to read everything that comes in from the public. I know I read everything that comes in from the public and I know it's a lot. So I want to assure folks that that happens. We don't always necessarily agree with your suggestions or conclusions respectfully, but we do read them. The other thing, there was a comment or two that jumped on the expression that the mayor and I used about bang for the buck. And I just want to say that I take exception to any suggestion that we only care about cost. Obviously, there are many other factors and values that are at play here. Cost factors into how we make our final decisions, surely. But it's not a situation where we only care about costs. And I, I just want to sort of associate myself with the comments of Tracy Willow, who talked about this being, you know, a complex cost benefit analysis for, for different options. For those who were involved in the Bethesda Stream Restoration Project, which I know nothing about, there seemed to be a lot of concerns about invasive species either being planted or coming back in that area. I just want to suggest to folks that if they're interested in looking at how a stream restoration project is done in Gaithersburg. Again, Blum Park is a, is a good place to take a look because that project just recently mostly completed. And at least to me, it looked like there were a lot of native plant species that were planted around the stormwater basin, the stream basin area. There were some questions about wildlife and the impacts of wildlife. I'm no expert on that by any means, but I do want to just point out that there will remain significant old growth forest areas around the workspace, the designated workspace for this project immediately around it. And then in sort of concentric circles around going out, there will be plenty of other forested area. And the project is slated to happen, assuming it gets approved in the fall. So I don't know if that's going to have any impact on wildlife in terms of, you know, when, when animals nest and things like that. And then finally, I just wanted to ask if staff could bring up packet page 189 onto the screen and ask our staff to just comment on that aerial photograph and what's shown there. That's packet page 189.
Robbie, do you want to handle that question?
Sure.
Tech team, are you bringing up the page? One second.
I believe the, it was an aerial just showing that during that time, I believe it was 1979, that there weren't as many trees there as there are now. So the, the area was a lot, it was, it was very, very open just 40 to 50 years ago. And we were just supplying this information here that the trees that did grow, did grow more rapidly than opposition would, would think and what they were saying compared to, to the, the current situation.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to put that up there for some context since I saw it in the, in the packet background materials. And I think it sort of lends itself to the discussion we've been having about the way that, you know, this, this little piece of the ecosystem and other pieces of the ecosystem have changed and continue to change over time and may not have been what we thought they were not that long ago. That's all I've got, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to, so we're going to Rob, Neil, and then Loriann. Go ahead, Rob.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for allowing me to reserve my comment section of my discussion for after the questions. So, you know, I'll just start off by, you know, one, agreeing with Mike that, you know, having, having worked with each of you for a very long time, there, there are all tree huggers among us. And I'm pretty sure I saw Mike out hugging a tree the other day. I'm just kidding there, Mike. And I'll also admit that my view on this project is kind of colored by two things. One is, at least in my assessment, a view that the Blum Park project kind of tried to slip under the radar and there was not a deliberative process on it, at least when I was on the council. And there wasn't a lot of, kind of what I would expect from a project of that magnitude. The other thing that's coloring me is, is the Watkins Mill Interchange Project where 21 acres of forest was torn down. And I've seen the, the impact of it and, you know, you know, it, it is not as bad as I thought it would be. But I remember the, the feeling at the time, I remember Mr. Mayor, you and I went up and met with SHA and walked through the project and tried to, you know, talk to them about the rationales behind the project and making modifications to the project and things like that. And, you know, I remember at that time, the impact on the community that I live in and the thought that, you know, the feeling that it was kind of just sprung on me, which was in my community and the city in kind of the same way Blum Park was. And so I appreciate this deliberative process that we're doing now. And I appreciate the level of engagement from staff. And I don't want anybody to, to take away from this that any of the questions that I'm asking are in any way denigrating the effort that's been going into the deliberations here. You know, I, I do kind of get the sense that a, a lot of what's going on here and a lot of the comments that have been made are kind of defending the project and rightfully so. There are aspects of this project that are apparent and beneficial. And I'm not going to go through the list of them. But, you know, there are merits to this project that I don't think existed necessarily with respect to Blum Park. You know, with my comment before, you know, Mike, I did watch the, the, the planning commission video. And I did watch the planning commission presentation as well. And the, the answers weren't quite there that I was looking for. And specifically what I'm asking for is kind of what some folks today were speaking about and a lot of folks that were submitting cogent comments into the record are, are talking about. And that's, I'm not necessarily interested in defending the project. I'm interested in the best project going forward and making sure that every aspect of the project that is addressing the many myriad of issues that have been raised is appropriate for the project. It's appropriate in scope. You know, have we addressed, you know, the holistically other aspects outside of the project? And so, you know, the one thing that came to mind and the one ask I have is, you know, something that's kind of common in larger scale projects, is common in construction projects, for example, is between now and, and, you know, fall, is we retain a consultant to do a peer review of the design of this project with a specific mind on, on maximizing the benefit, the ecological benefit for the stormwater mitigation aspect of the project, but also reviewing the project for minimizing the ecological impact to the areas around the project. And I don't mean that in any way, shape or form to, to denigrate the A and E that's been retained here. And Caitlin has been great in explaining the project. But I'm sure she recognizes this, that a peer review is, is something that's commonplace in larger scale projects. I would also suggest the possibility of retaining an ecological, environmental engineer or consultant to manage the contractor during the project itself. But that may be a bridge too far, but I'll throw it out there. But that may be a bridge too far, but I'll throw it out there. And, you know, again, I don't mean to denigrate any anyone here, but one of the comments kind of struck me with respect to the cost of projects, other projects, and the monetary aspect of that. And kind of the feeling that I got that it we also need to consider the monetary value or the value assigned to the environment as it's as it remains, as it stands, and the the environmental impact or the monetary impact of the degradation of the environment. And so what came to mind there was a project, for example, in Washington DC that I read about a few years ago, where the district actually required the developer to move trees, you know, specimen trees on the project out of the footprint of the building and preserve them to the cost of, I think it was $150,000 per tree. So at that point, you know, in that project, anecdotally, there's a value assigned to what is there and the impact of what is there, not just the cost of the project itself. And I would humbly assert that we need to consider that cost in the cost benefit analysis as well. And perhaps a peer review would allow us to do that. So I'll just suggest that, and thank everyone for listening to me.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, we're gonna go to Neil, then Loriann, then Mike. Go ahead, Neil.
All right, now I have to try to remember what I was gonna say after all that. No, but first of all, I think this almost strikes me, I I I'm going to digress for one second, and I know it's late, but, you know, I do a lot of work on the transportation side, and there's a lot of arguments of transit versus roads. And what I heard tonight is a lot of discussion of streams versus trees. And unfortunately, this stream is highly degraded and it needs repair, and the only way to do that is to sacrifice some trees. I would like to point out for the audience that we've learned as a council at a meeting, I think Rob Robinson shared this with us a few years back, that the state's goal is 40% of the land covered by tree canopy, Gaithersburg is at about 39%. So we're not lacking in trees, and I don't want to disrespect trees. I like them. I was a Boy Scout. I appreciate nature as much as anybody, but we can't fix this stream without dealing with some trees around it, and that's kind of unfortunate. Also, we're dealing with the aftermath of many years of development before before governments became enlightened as to the need for dealing with stormwater in different ways than it was or dealing with it at all, other than shuffling it into sewers and into streams. So going back and redoing all of the stormwater treatments at the source needs to be addressed, but it's going to be a long, slow, and probably expensive process that needs to be done, but it's not going to be done quickly. We will learn tonight that there are 30 acres of impervious surface that drain into this into this particular stream. That's huge. Or 30% of the acreage is impervious. There's a number 30 in there somewhere. But at any rate, it's a it's a very large scope project, and these kinds of things are typically dealt with in conjunction with other work. In other words, a road is going to be repaired like Coinfortured Boulevard, and then it's time to do some some mitigation work there. So I can pretty much assure the 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 audience and the city residents and the those who care who aren't city residents that, as we go forward as a city, we'll be addressing these kinds of things as we piece by piece. It's going to be a long, slow process. It won't happen overnight. You know, somebody posted a video tonight, I guess it was the Muddy Branch Alliance, it's on video on Facebook of the water pouring into the stream because of the storm that happened tonight. So clearly, things need to be addressed. But in the short term, we need to to make this stream healthy, and it's unhealthy in a lot of ways. It's not just erosion, but the quality of the water because of the speed at which it flows through is an issue. A number of people have commented, including my colleague, Mr. Wu, that the public outreach process is is not what it should be. I don't think that's true. But the public outreach comes after plans are pretty well down the road, which is the way it has to be. I mean, you can't get people involved at the very beginning of the process. There has to be something to to comment on. And we've been talking about this project, and we talked about the Blum Park project for quite a bit before it actually decided to go forward, so I'm not sure how to make that process better, and I'm all for democracy in action and letting people in the loop, but I think that has been the case, and I think we've gotten a tremendous amount of input. And as as my colleagues have have shared, I have been to Blum Park to see what the aftermath of the project was, and it is pretty much as promised. Parts of the park look like it had a bad haircut, but it's coming back as bad haircuts do. It's going to take a year or two or three to get back to the point where we're, it looks less like a bad haircut and more like a forest. This, one last comment on the Solitaire Court area, which I've also looked at, and I used to live in Pheasant Run when I first moved to Gaithersburg and lived nearby, and I know that area. I mean, it's not a pristine natural forest, and there wouldn't be sewer pipes underneath the stream if it had not been disturbed by mankind multiple times over the years, so we're going to do our best to restore it or remake it into a form that is sustainable as we go forward, and that's the best we can do at this point. So I really appreciate the time and effort that all of our our staff and consultants have brought, but also what the citizens have brought. I have some long phone conversations today with people concerned about this project, and you know, I think we've had all the input we we can have, and we're going to make the best decisions that we can make going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. We will go to Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to reserve some questions. I had questions during the tour this afternoon, and I didn't see in the packet page the actual design of what the stream is slated to look like, and I know we looked at some of the project plans while we were on the tour, and I know there were questions about what the actual design would look like this evening. Are you able to show that?
We didn't put the design plans in the packet, but they are available on the procurement page. It's part of this solicitation.
Okay, because I think you'll have a better understanding of the design, especially near the large structure where all of the water is rushing in that big pipeline. Part of my concern with, you know, these projects in the process, this wasn't, this meeting wasn't part of the original outreach plan. And so as we continue to talk about these projects, maybe revisiting what the outreach plan is going to be. When I knew about the plan for Blum Park, I did not anticipate what was left here. And I take offense to, you know, the flippant comment that it's just a bad haircut. That's not what it is. A lot of trees were removed, and it's a barren place at this point, and it's going to take years, maybe decades, before those trees will go grow back, and a tree canopy will even be called a tree canopy in this park. And so I want us to be as open and honest with our residents and the community about what's really going to happen. It's not just a couple of trees, but we know that it's going to be significant tree loss. And so we can tell the people that it's not going to be that much, but what they're going to be left with is what I have to live with across the street for the next couple of years. And so if we're going to have these sorts of projects, I would love for the packets that we are sharing with the public to have more information to replicate every phase of what the project will entail. So the current phase or the current state of Blum Park or even a similar structure is not included in this packet. You're showing what's going to happen after it grows in, and so I don't think it's fair to show what it could be, but what it will look like. I don't know if we're able to pull up an updated page of the current state of Blum Park or even a similar project immediately after the stream restoration.
Blum Park is a different sort of project than what's being proposed for Solitaire. Blum Park is a legacy sediment removal project, so it took out a lot more trees because they actually took out four or five feet of sediment that had been collecting there over 100, 150 years, so it's going to take more than a couple of years to really get it back to what it was pre-colonial stages. Solitaire is not that kind of project. It's a little bit different.
But you did mention that all of the trees along the stream bed will be removed.
Most of them. There are some places where we are being able to plank the trees within the LOD, but I would say the majority of trees within the limits of disturbance will come out, but we are trying to save as many as possible.
And I know that you're doing one phase at a time. You're doing the first part across the street if this project is approved, and then the next part will be in a few weeks later, and so if we're seeing that more trees are taken away than anticipated, is this something that we could revisit while the project is in the middle of its implementation?
I'm not really sure what you're asking. Can we, if we do more reforestation at the end of the project? We do have money in the reforestation fund for the city, so if we need to plant more trees at the end of the project, that's probably likely to be able to happen.
Okay.
Any more questions, Loriann?
No, that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Mike.
So I think I'll just, Rob raised the point of it sounds very defensive. I think perhaps that might be one perspective. I think the other issue is that the opposition doesn't really, hasn't actually understood the objectives of the project, so what we're providing is an explanation for the need for the project and how it's going to happen. I agree with that we might have had some additional figures and slides in the presentation that that would have helped explain this, but but I know that the opposition or the the many of the individuals who oppose this have have looked at those plans thoroughly, so they know what it's all about and what the design is. They've also made exaggerated it and resorted to hyperbole to describe the project. I think, as I said earlier, I really do appreciate the the suggestions on how the city can do a better job of addressing stormwater runoff and mitigation of it. But even with all of those suggestions, even if we implemented all of that, no one tonight in opposition actually addressed the major objectives of this project, which is to reduce significant erosion in the stream bed and the stream valley, to protect a sanitary sewer line that runs almost the entire length of the stream, to remove invasive species and to prevent further damage to private property. No one has addressed that, beginning from the first individual who spoke. So you know, I think it's important to remember what those objectives are and why we need to do this. If we if we did all of those mitigation projects to prevent the water from getting into the stream in the first place, we would still have these problems and the challenges to that that are occurring at this site. We have to address those. That's our responsibility, I think, as stewards of the of the city, so. As I, as I said, and Rob has reminded us, we're all tree huggers here. We all believe in the importance of them. The the forest canopy is an important part of our identity as a city, as if you look at the the emblem that we are so fond of, Gaithersburg and the Y Oak in the middle of the the G. You know, that says something about our identity as a city, so I don't, you know, if 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 someone wants to dispute our commitment to that, there's nothing I can do about it except to try and educate them about it. As far as I understand, when these projects begin and through the course of their, as they progress, I expect that our project manager and coordinators will be there watching to make sure that it's that it's done according to plan, that the limit of disturbance is actually obeyed, and that damage to and and removal of trees is limited as much as possible, and perhaps as the project progresses, they may find ways to save more trees. But I think we have to remember that the reconstruction of these stream banks, so that they are not vertical walls, but actually tapering, sloping into the the course of the stream, is actually going to lower the level of the of the of the stream banks for a distance from the center of the stream, so those trees won't be, those trees where they sit now and where they come out of the ground is about two or could be two or three feet higher than where that reconstructed bank is going to be, so that's why those trees will need to come out. And that's unfortunate, but I think if you look at this picture from 1979, and someone from the West Riding Community shared pictures last night of satellite views, well, not of aerial views of this same area from 1951, much of this forest isn't there. Especially if you look at the the picture on page 189, the forest basically ends on the hill, ends at the stream. There is no forest on the other side where West Riding is in that photograph from 1979. That photograph from 79 was before Solitaire Court was built. So that gives you some idea when people say we're talking about an old growth forest and all of the trees that are going to be eliminated, I, you know, to me, an old growth forest is is a forest that's hundreds of years old, or at least 100 years old. And I don't think that's the case here. Anyway, that's that's it. I appreciate all the work the staff has done. I appreciate the concern expressed by residents and other people who live in the area in Montgomery County, and we certainly are aware of those concerns, and we're doing everything we can to address that, but this is a project that has to be done. You know, damn the points. I mean, we're going to get points, but that's not the object of this project. The object of this project is to make a unhealthy stream healthy again. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mike. I'll just, I'll just add one more or two more points here, and then and then we'll adjourn the meeting. The first point is to to sort of piggyback on what Mike just said. The tree trees are very important to our identity. In fact, Gaithersburg is named by the Maryland Department of the Environment for, I think, close to four decades straight, a tree city. And the reason we are a tree city is because we, because of our policy that any tree that gets cut down has to be replaced, and that goes for these projects, and it goes for if you've got a tree in front of your house, and you want to cut it down, you need to get a tree permit, and part of that permit is is you saying where you're going to replant your tree, and what, you know, what's your plan? And that's, and and so that goes along quite nicely with this picture from on page 189 of the package, where, you know, there are more trees in Gaithersburg today than there were 20 years ago or 100 years ago. That is, it's because we we've sort of made it that way. And I want to also speak to comments from from Rob, Rob Wu, and from Loriann Sales about the what was in that included in the packet tonight. Part of this is is because this, this was not a long scheduled meeting. The the two discussion topics before this were long scheduled, but I called, I deferred the vote that was supposed to happen last week and asked for this discussion to be added at sort of at the lab from staff perspective and putting together a packet perspective. This was a last minute thing to add this to this work session, and so staff put in a bunch of stuff, but yet, but yeah, there, you know, they didn't put in the whole presentation on 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 the stream restoration. on 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 the stream restoration, nor did they go out and get new pictures of the current state of Blum Park. So part of it is because of the rushed nature of just adding this in. But I think I've, I feel like this was an important discussion for us to have and give background, not only to everybody here, but to the public on on this project and and sort of our thinking on stream restoration projects and and reiterating our our commitment to the natural environment, including trees. And, you know, we're up here because we have to, we have to make tough decisions and make a and strike a balance. You know, I I a hundred percent, I respect everybody who spoke tonight from the public and their and their commitment and love to love for trees. And I think we share it, but we also have to strike a balance with other factors, water quality, the regulatory requirements, you know, private property, sewer lines, all these things sort of have to be, we have to, we're elected to to look at the big big picture, and sometimes we have to deal with competing priorities and make tough decisions. So here we are. And with that, unless there's any other need from staff, Tanisha, do we feel, do you feel guided here? Are we good?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, with that, sorry, appreciate everyone's patience for staying this late with us. They don't, our meetings don't usually go this late. Next regular meeting of the mayor council, which we will probably take a vote on this matter, will be next Monday, July nineteenth. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.